Good evening and welcome to the Tuesday, October seventeenth, two thousand twenty-three Business Meeting of the Olympia City Council. For the record, we have Mayor Protem Gilman tuning in remotely, and Councilmember Partially will be with us shortly. Before we begin, I would like to read a statement. It's a difficult one regarding what's going on in the Middle East. "The city of Olympia is deeply saddened by the horrific violence in Israel and the resulting loss of lives in Israel and Gaza. We unequivocally condemn war and the senseless deaths of civilians on both sides and stand in support and comfort of our community members who are affected by these events and those who are grieving the loss of loved ones. We choose to lead with compassion rather than feed on continued acts of violence through antisemitism, Islamophobia, and other hate crimes. Hate has no home here in Olympia. The Olympia Police Department and Olympia Fire Department have enhanced attention on the safety of local synagogues and mosques and other places that the community could be targeted for harm. Please check on your neighbors, your coworkers, friends, and others in the community who may need to hear from us a message of unity, compassion, and reassurance of belonging. I'm now going to ask for a moment of silence to recognize the lives lost, the lives suffering, and the deep trauma of the survivors, and ask for strength and peace for the struggles ahead." Thank you. I should have watched the news before I came to council tonight. It's just been a hard, hard day. At this time, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda.
So moved?
Second.
All favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion passes. We have special recognition this evening, and that is an annual calendar competition that we have for local artists, local youth in our community, and it's for water resources. So I'd like to invite forward Erin Conine, the Senior Program Specialist in Public Works, and Susan McClary, who's also a program specialist.
Mayor Selby, councilmembers, I'm Erin Conine, Public Works. Drinking Water, sorry, I used to say in Water Resources, but we split a couple months ago. And?
I'm Susan McClary, Senior Program Specialist, Stormwater.
We are happy to be here tonight to recognize the middle school students whose artwork was selected for our 2024 Water Resources Storage Ship Through Art Calendar. This is such a fun project for us to work on, and we think that the kids have a good time as well. It helps us bring awareness to stormwater pollution prevention and water conservation best practices. For the contest, we develop key storage ship messages and solicit entries from public, private, and homeschooled middle schoolers in Olympia. After the artwork is selected, we add supplemental information to the key message for each month. We are happy to have these students help us spread the word and want to thank everyone who participated.
So now it's my great pleasure to introduce each of the artists that were able to join us this evening, and students, please stand when I call your name. We're going to start off with the cover artist Caitlin Lanies for Practice Bee Friendly Yard Care. Our next artist is Jennifer Chiallo.
Chiallo, thank you. Paige Shorten Shalwitz.
Next, we have Jacob Moore, Only Rain Down the Storm Drain. Our next artist is Dietri Patel for Install a Rain Barrel. Next, we have Kira Nguyen, Practice Bee Friendly Yard Care. And we have Merrilee Solomon, Every Drop Counts. Our next artist is Delaney Springer, Only Rain Down the Storm Drain. And we have Quinzola, Water Landscapes, Early or Late. Next, we have William Whitey, Only Rain Down the Storm Drain. And Pamela Martinez Garcia, Don't Let the Water Run. Our next artist is Dunia Eberling, Practice Bee Friendly Yard Care. And we have Ryder Hunter, Conserve and Protect Olympia's Water. And our last artist is Isabel Santana, Don't Drip and Drive, Fixed Vehicle Leaks. Thank you all so much for your contribution to our 2024 calendar. The calendars will be available at all the local schools, and we'll have some here at Olympia City Hall in the lobby. You can always contact us if you need to get more calendars as well. So now we'd like to hear comments from the councilmembers. Wonderful, thanks for that great presentation, Erin and Susan. And we have ours up here. I was leafing through it as you were going through each month, and it's just, you know, makes the mayor's heart happy to see that we have such talented but also passionate youth in our community around climate. So thanks for providing this opportunity to our school-age students to, you know, engage in this way, in a creative way. Go down, Councilmember Partially?
Last year I hung this up, I guess it's still this year, still hanging at work. And when my staff asked me about it, I told them the story, and every month they look forward to the next picture, and I make sure they don't peek. So this is next year's, it's going to hang on the wall at St. in my clinic. And I agree with the mayor, you can educate people in many ways about things they shouldn't do, but I think art is the most beautiful way. It's the one that really gets you in the heart and actually makes you look at your own actions. So thank you to all the artists.
Next, I have Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I love education through art, and I really appreciate all the contributions. This is one of my favorite things that we do each year is get our new calendar and get to celebrate you all. And I just hope you're very proud of yourselves, and proud of you.
Councilmember Cooper?
Thank you. Thank you all for contributing your art to the community, it's beautiful. And I hope that we see Don't Drip and Drive on a bumper sticker really soon.
Love it. All right, so thank you again. Thank you so much, yeah. If the students, all the artists that are here, would you please come up to the front? We'll get a picture taken.
Stick up our calendars.
Thank you. Well, we needed something to brighten up our day, and that really worked. We are now moving on to a public comment. We allow the public, either remotely or in council chambers, to address the council regarding city matters. You have two minutes, there's a countdown clock over my right shoulder. This is the time of year where we are very, very hopeful that everyone is registered to vote, number one, and is ready to vote. But we cannot allow people to talk about ballot measures or candidates during public comment. So if someone steers that direction, I will be reminding you about that rule. We have, let me see, sorry, there's like five sheets here. So I'm going to start with, do we have anyone remote? Yes, okay, two. So I'm going to start with the remote folks that have signed up. And it might take a minute, for some reason, oh, there it is, sorry. Literally, I've got six sheets. There you are. All right, so we'll start with Larry Jezza, followed by Jim Lazar. Larry's traveling. Not as popular as I thought. Yeah.
Yes. Great, okay, thank you. I'm speaking tonight as an ordinary citizen, and I want to address Item 6A on tonight's agenda. You're poised to adopt a 2024 legislative agenda that would instruct the city's paid lobbyist to get the state legislature to make it legal for cities to create a regional fire authority through council action instead of a vote of the people. If that is correct, and I'm appalled that the city council would propose circumventing the voters of Olympia and try to get the legislature to give the council the power to do what two-thirds of their own voters rejected just a few months ago. It is highly unlikely you meant anything else because existing laws allow for interlocal joint power agreements and contracts between cities through council manic action already. And you have this on your agenda, ready for approval tonight, without an opportunity for the public to have a hearing on it. In my study of the legislative history of RFA laws, the legislation was very concerned that the extremely powerful taxing tools that the RFA provides should be doubly approved by the public with multiple votes, and when it came to the infamous fire benefit charge that required a supermajority of voters to enact it. The thought that the city would use the same voter's tax dollars to hire a lobbyist to take that power away from the same voters is, I'm sorry, there's a name, there's a word for it, but I don't want to talk about that word. But I will say that when you look at the city's survey results from the 2023 City Engagement of Public Opinion, you are certainly validating the survey's results, which show that only sixteen percent of the public, quote, "feel confident that the city listens to the feedback it receives from its residents." Well, this kind of proposal really doubles down on that feeling that the city just doesn't care about what the voters and the residents think. We just had this election. Help me believe that the council is better than this and pull this item from your legislative priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Lazar, and then we'll move to in council, or in chambers, speakers.
Good evening, Jim Lazar, nineteen oh seven Lakers Drive Southeast. I'm also speaking on Item 6A, the Agenda of the Draft Legislative Priorities on combining fire departments. The voters of this community voted two oh one, two to one, against doing that just in April of this year. Taking this action to push this into the city's legislative agenda will increase the mistrust of the council. You have discussed having a levy lid lift next year to make up for some of the property taxes that have diminished because of an issue of 747. Increasing mistrust of the public is not a way to build confidence to pass such a thing. You already have the ability to have interlocal agreements. You already have mutual aid agreements. In fact, Olympia provides about twice as much mutual aid to other areas as it receives. You need to start by invoicing the other jurisdictions for mutual aid, and of course, expect them to do the same when they provide assistance to us. To the best of my knowledge, this issue has not been on any committee agenda or any advisory committee agenda. That tells me that this item has come onto your legislative agenda as a result of secret discussions among the councilmembers, the city manager, and perhaps other staff. The city manager cannot talk to four of you about a single agenda item. That is a serial meeting. If that happened, you are guilty of violating the Open Public Meetings Act. The city manager cannot have secret meetings with you. I urge you to remove this item from the legislative priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. We are going to switch to in-person public comments. Going to start with Gary Altman, followed by Bob Jacobs.
Hopefully I'll make this succinct, they told me I had five minutes, one of the staff told me. So anyway, I live at nine one one Fifth Avenue Southeast. I live in a mixed building there. Twenty years ago, my wife, Dr. Bailey, who's a local dentist, and I'm surprised, if somebody doesn't know her, I'd be shocked. We have had a lot of trouble with the conditions around our building. I have a notebook full of things that I've dealt with talking with people. This last week, you know, I go on a vacation, I come back, you know, there's one tent, they're blocking the sidewalks, they're blocking the whole place. I start calling. I call twice a day because nothing's happening. I get to talk to the police officers. This last week, they stopped talking to me. Finally, on Thursday, an officer says, well, I've talked to the upper, to the higher-ups, and there's nothing we can do about it. And so at that point, I spent six hours poking the bear, is what I call it. I go around everywhere, I talk, I make phone calls, I talk to everybody I can. So the police, I've been told this is going to happen, the police need this. We need the extension of the policy that the downtown corps has to allow it to move people that are blocking the sidewalk, that are living there, because once one tent gets there, there's two. So this is what happened. I tried to get rid of one tent, then there was two, then there was four, there were six. They're on both sides of the seat, they're on all side of the street, and on Friday, after twenty years of being there, somebody broke into the dental office and ransacked through it. So what a shock, there's all these people living around my building, on the sidewalks, and blocking them. I need your help. I need to have this thing that people have promised me at other levels for years. Extend that so the police have some tools to go. And then I'd like to have Tommy talk to me about a proactive approach rather than me calling and calling and calling and being squeaky door. I have, I'd like to have a vacation.
Thank you. We will have a staff person talking after we close public comment about this. Bob Jacobs.
Good evening, I'm Bob Jacobs, I live at seven twenty Governor Stevens Avenue in Olympia. I'm here to address the draft legislative priorities item on your agenda, that's Agenda Item 6A. Specifically, the proposal would allow cities to form combined public safety departments without a vote of their residents. I've said for years that legislative priorities are as important as city ordinances, and that they should be developed with lots of public involvement. I'm sure this would result in a better legislative package. Think about tapping into the expertise of hundreds of local residents who have experienced developing state legislation. This draft item underscores that idea. Olympia and Tumwater put a seriously flawed issue to the voters recently for a regional fire authority. It failed badly. Not because the idea was bad, I'm convinced, but because the specific proposal was bad, as was the process used to develop it. The proposal before you this evening is beyond cynical. It reinforces the message that we get so often between the lines. Just pay your taxes and shut up. All the while, city officials talk about the importance of public involvement in city government. This proposal says clearly, if the public won't vote the way we want, we'll just do an end run to the legislature. We know best, and elections are just window dressing. I find this a sad time to be alive. This proposal doesn't help. Please drop it.
Thank you. That concludes public comment for this evening. And I'd like to ask our city manager, Jay Burney, to talk about the legislative agenda.
Yeah, you have the draft legislative agenda on your agenda. Later on this evening, Item 6A has been pointed out. This item that's there, Susan's going to talk more about it when she comes up to talk about what it is. And what I believe needs to happen is we need to really revise the wording of this item. This is not about trying to circumvent the RFA vote process or to make the RFA process council manic. The intent here is to highlight the shortcomings of public safety funding within our state legislature and looking for opportunities for other partnerships. So I think it's, the wording needs some work, but it's not the intention here to override the will of the voters. We'll talk more about that when this item comes up, and I definitely think with this feedback tonight, we certainly need to make some changes to that wording.
Thank you for that clarification. And then next, I believe, Rich Hoy, or no, Darian Lightfoot, there she is. Darian Lightfoot, who is our housing program manager, many hats.
Hi.
Yes, hi.
To the camping on Fifth. Yes, hi, my name is Darian Lightfoot, the Director of Housing and Homeless Response. Our team is very aware of the encampment outside of Salvation Army. There's a handful of folks are all on the trajectory to have temporary housing, either in shelter, Unity Commons, or one of our several tiny home villages. Clean Team was out there today and picked up a lot of the debris that's blocking the right-of-way, and we have been in communication with OPD. And staff is looking at potentially expanding the sitlight ordinance that was referenced, that is existing in the downtown, and seeing if it makes sense around the services being provided just up a few blocks past Plum. So we're really working to get folks into housing or shelter. If we're just looking to move them on, it's going to set up another encampment a couple streets away, and we really want to work to mitigate the issue of people living unsheltered outside and not having to establish encampment on the right-of-way. So Clean Team has been engaged, OPD has been engaged, and we're really looking to transition people into housing. So can you answer any other questions?
Absolutely. So you mentioned you have been in contact with Salvation Army?
Yes, yep.
What have you heard from them?
Because of the capacity of their congregate shelter and how meals are delivered through their services, this is how they are currently set up. And in order to feed folks at the amount they're able to feed folks, they have to set up places to eat in the line outside. And so they're looking to provide services, they have daily shelter, they have long-term shelter, but people are really just looking to access the services that they need. Catholic Community Services offers their food and their meals along that area, too. So it's just a corner that has a lot of services. People don't have cell phones or consistent places to be contacted when coordinated entry spots come up. So when people congregate around service areas like this, you're more likely to be found when a shelter bed arrives. So it's just around placement because there's not a specific address. And if you're around places that provide services, you're more likely to be found when something becomes available. So we're just trying to move that process along.
So I have one more question, then I'll turn it over to the council. So Salvation Army is doing an overnight shelter now?
Yeah, they have nightly beds, yeah, they just don't work through coordinated entry because they have their own process that's set up. But yes, and it's kind of like a show-up, and you may have a bed. And so that's why people show up at a certain time and try to see if there's a bed available. And because they're not working through coordinated entry right now, it's hard to know if a shelter bed is available for someone. So they are in the process of migrating toward our coordinated entry process. They are enthusiastic about being a participant in that, but they're not there yet.
Thank you. I've got Councilmember Nguyen with a question.
Sir, what is your name with the hat and the dental office? Oh, hi, Gary Altman, my name's Ian. I have a question regarding Gary's public comment, and you might be able to answer this, Darian. So I hear that, you know, I hear the frustration, right? And then also the care of the people that are without housing. And yes, that it's easier if we know where they are in order to connect them with services. And then also, hearing that, something you know very well, is that there's also so many impacts on the community that's around as well, right? So the businesses, that's sort of a residential area, too, it goes up into neighborhoods. So what is, in the meantime, I guess, one, what's the timeline? And then in the meantime, what's the updates that people can expect? Is there someone connected with Gary? Surely, I would guess that you would be connected already with the police department, but you know, for folks like Gary, hopefully not everyone is getting break-ins, but you know, what can people expect? You know, we certainly wouldn't want you to come here tonight and not have something to look forward to and someone there really to support you and help you know, you know, updates as they arrive, right? So what, can you, anything on that, that would be great?
Our tiny home villages and our shelters are all really at capacity. And so we're trying to, we have really close partnerships with all of our providers. So when a bed becomes available, we're working really hard for direct placement and to honor the coordinated entry system. So because the system is based on vulnerability, we're, and we have to honor those scores. And so when a bed becomes available, we try to find someone that has a higher vulnerability index. And that could be someone that's on the right-of-way currently, or it could not. So our team is out there daily. I know Gary has spoken with Kim Condrat, the Homeless Response Coordinator, and we are out there every day trying to engage with people, seeing who their case managers are, really ensuring that they are on the list and that when a spot becomes available, they're ready. But a timeline is really challenging. We know that there'll be a couple beds available in a week or so, and we want to continue to engage with Clean Team for when there's debris that goes into the right-of-way that can be cleaned up. But as far as a timeline, because we don't have the ordinance in place that aligns with how the downtown is set up, it's hard to really speak to when that would be gone.
Just, thank you, just a quick follow-up. And certainly, this is not easy work. So you know, I do want to hold space for that, I do recognize that it's not simple. So there's been, you know, there's folks, we've touched on the ordinance, the sitlight ordinance, and it is something of consideration right now. So what is the, and quite honestly, as councilmembers, you know, we juggle a lot of different needs in the city. Can someone speak to what the timeline for consideration for this ordinance is? I know it'll be coming to us rather soon.
Yeah, we are working on a timeline with staff to bring you a proposal to expand the sitlight in that area. So it hasn't been in front of council yet. I know we've had conversations as a staff, and we're going to talk at Agenda Saturday on Monday to find a good date. Your agendas are very jam-packed as we get towards the end of the year. And so we're just trying to figure out the right space for this before the end of the year to put something in front of you as another business item so we can have a good discussion about the data behind sitlight. You know, how do we use it, how do we enforce it, what's it look like? What's our experience with it in the downtown corps? So we'd like to have that conversation with the full council. I'm going to hope within the next thirty to forty-five days.
Thank you. I've got Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Payne.
One comment and a question. This all kind of fits into the other parts of our legislative agenda we haven't heard about yet, which is, you know, supporting financing for homelessness, mental health, addiction, because some of our big gaps are mental health and addiction services. So supporting our legislative agenda that way is super important because we need help. As you've mentioned, it's a circular problem to balance the needs of the community, which I find are incredibly compassionate human beings. And it's not compassionate to leave someone sleeping in a tent, let's just face it. We need more resources, and we need more help. So it's circular, you know, at some point, we run out of resources, and there's nowhere for folks to go. So that's, it's a problem, how do you balance? And I live, work right in that area, and I have a building down on Plum Street. So I understand your troubles, not as directly, I'm being impacted, but I do understand.
Mr. Altman, I'm so sorry, I just need to intervene. No, yeah.
We can talk later, Mr. Altman.
Yes. Okay, I just need to remind folks that the public comment time is not a back-and-forth with our public. It's awkward, I know, it's a passionate topic.
Okay, sorry, I didn't mean to increase the passion there, but it's a circular thing. My question to you is, my memory, when Salvation Army was not able, no longer able to take beds, prior to that, were they part of the coordinated entry system? And is there any way to make them part of it? Are we working on that? I wasn't aware that they were having overnight shelter again.
Yeah, they-
Yeah, they have enthusiasm to become a part of the coordinated entry system. That's something that they've had new staff here in the past handful of months. And when they arrived in Thurston County, we we said, welcome, please um join coordinated entry. And so there's much more enthusiasm around them becoming a part of the process. So um short term um. Learning curve for a long term benefit. So we're getting there. I really feel that.
Thank you, Darian.
Uh next, I have Councilmember Payne followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Yes, um first of all, I wanted to thank uh Councilmember Wen for addressing uh Mr. Altman's concerns in a very direct way. Um I I think that um the the community has been very clear that they expect us to. Uh balance accountability and compassion uh on this issue. And so um. Very much looking forward to our discussion on um the sit lie ordinance. Um and what that might look like for the city. Um Mr. Altman, I. Clearly, you are frustrated as many others are in the community. Uh as you've heard tonight, we are trying to. Do our best to serve everyone. Um and that includes those who are most vulnerable in our community as well. Um and so we appreciate the patience that you've extended thus far uh on this issue. Um. And so it sounds like um, you know, obviously we'll be continuing to wrestle that with this for some time. Um and so I'll just humble myself and ask uh for your patience uh even more. Um and also, um I'd just like to um, you know, address the council by saying that. Um, you know, the conversation uh that we need to have around this is probably not going to be an easy one. Um and certainly is is likely um to uh draw lots of opinions from the community as well. Um but nevertheless, we need to have it. Um and so I think it's part of our goals as we are um breaking. Breaking down and uh encampments and and housing folks that are in various encampments. Uh we have a responsibility to also look at the spaces where um new uh tents in in. Homeless populations are are popping up in various parts of the community. And that is part of our one community plan. And so we need to uh hold ourselves to that and and enact. On uh the other public comment regarding uh the EMS fire service. Um I I will just say that obviously um, you know, uh. Mr. Lazar, Mr. Jazza, and Mr. Jacobs, you obviously have a reason to think. Um that we would make such a proposal based on how this is written. However, I will just tell you and and the rest of the community. That I certainly have been, I have not been part of any conversations uh that uh would usurp the public's. Uh will on the RFA and to try to take council manic action. Um so I will just speak for myself and tell you that um I certainly have been part, haven't been part of those discussions. And I do not intend to support such a proposal. So, thank you.
Thank you. And next, you have Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Altman, for putting a face on your story. I think every time. We get uh another human story, it evolves how we respond to a really, really difficult situation. And and all of my colleagues and the staff have have demonstrated and talked about where we are on that. I. I do wanna echo Councilmember partially that it's my belief that if shelters provided in this city, it needs to use coordinated entry. Period. And so expediting that timeline as much as possible, we're looking at how we might. You know, and and I'm sitting here thinking as this conversation goes on, uh not two weeks ago, we reauthorized emergency power for our city manager. And if we have policy levers that will help the situation that we've known, we know, know have. Have helped the situation in other parts of our city, then then I don't necessarily think they they should wait for city council scheduling. They should be enacted and then talked about later. I I mean, to be totally honest, like the the, you know, and personally, I will, I'm I'm not pro sit lie. But it's a tool in the toolbox that we've had in the downtown for fifteen years. You know, it's it's tested. And and if and if we hear from the experts, it's a tool that's needed in another part of town that's proximal to downtown. Then maybe that's a place for the staff to consider that tool that we have given staff around the emergency powers. Both for using coordinated entry and for looking at where that edge of that policy proposal lies. Cause while it's an important conversation, I think it's a pretty well-tested conversation in the community.
I I just wanna add clarity for coordinated entry that Salvation Army doesn't receive any public funds. So we have to. Work with them to use coordinated entry on their own free will because they don't receive pu- public funding. We don't get to require that in any of their contracts. We get to show them the benefits and build relationships and show how this is a benefit to the area and the community. And we're on track to do that. Um as far as requirements, it's just a little bit more challenging because of the funding.
Yeah, and I just push slightly back that that should be a land use conversation the city council should have. And it's uh on its plate is. What's allowable for shelter providers in the community if you're not a church?
Thank you.
I should say if you're not of faith, you know, a house of faith versus a service provider.
Uh Councilmember Wen.
Yeah, uh just one more time, Gary, and then I'll stop tonight. But I just wanna let you know that I'm I'm thinking about you. I think clearly from this conversation here. I hope that folk, you get the feeling that that uh, you know, your comment didn't land on deaf ears. I also heard you ask like. What is a more productive way instead of me calling all the time, right? And so uh. I please know that we will chew on that and um. I hear that. Um and we'll get back to you. Um also, oh, we have a finger from City Manager Bernie.
Well, I just wanna say that I know that Assistant City Manager Rich Hoy walked over and gave Mr. Mr. Altman his card. And we do plan to follow up with him. Um on this issue and see what we more we can do on a more expedited nature to deal with this issue in in advance of the discussion around sit lie.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone have additional comments?
Just a quick one that I I'm gonna support Councilmember Wen, that we need to be proactive, but let's not forget our one community plan. It was built by the community and the third part is accountability.
All right, thank you. We are going to close it. Thank you, Darian, so much. We're gonna move on. Uh now to our consent calendar adoption. I need a motion to approve. So moved? In a second?
Second.
All right.
Madam Mayor?
Yes.
I just wanna highlight you were gonna pull item four D.
I was just about to say that. Ten years, eight years up here. Sorry. I have a poll after it's been motioned and seconded. Then I do the polls. Sorry. So I have a poll this evening based on our conversations at Agenda Setting regarding item four D. Which is the approval of an ordinance implementing Olympia Municipal Code Chapters four point seven oh related to residential parking. And uh several of us had questions about why this wasn't on other business because it's uh an item that impacts a great. Deal of our um population here in the city. And so I am going to ask that we pull the item. Tonight for future action when it can be brought forward on other business. So uh. All right, so that and I see uh Mayor Portem Gilman, did you have any remarks on that?
I'm just ready to vote, Madam Mayor.
Okay, all right.
Can I ask a point of order? Is sure. You're, do we have to re-motion with a change if we're gonna pull for table?
That's, no, we don't. Okay, sorry. Thank you. We haven't done this in a long, long time. It's very rare that we pull something for separate action, so. We're good? Okay. So we have a motion and a second to approve tonight's consent calendar with pulling item four D for future action. All in favor, say aye.
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 Opposed. Motion passes. Thank you. All right, we are on to the public hearing. Section of our agenda, and we have three public hearings this evening. The first one is on the preliminary capital facilities plan for two thousand twenty-four through two thousand twenty-nine. It's our financial plan, and I'm gonna invite forward Joyce Phillips, who is our principal planner in community planning and development to walk us through. We're gonna be hearing about.
Great, thank you. Hi, I'm Joyce Phillips, Principal Planner with Community Planning and Development. I'm here tonight to talk with you about the preliminary capital facilities plan, two thousand twenty-four, two thousand twenty-nine financial plan. And you're hearing from a planner instead of a budget person. Because the financial plan, the CFP, is part of our comprehensive plan. And it is a way that we show. How we're going to implement and start achieving those remaining visions from our comprehensive plan. So tonight, I'm gonna talk with you about that. I'll focus primarily on the first year. Um but because it does become the capital budget for two thousand twenty-four upon its adoption. So the projects that are included in the plan come from the master plans that are developed to implement the comprehensive plan. Uh for those items that we have master plans for, such as the transportation master plan, the utilities master plans. The parks, arts, and recreation plan. Um and so those types of things really provide the level of detail. To show how we would be able to implement the goals and policies from the comprehensive plan. So all of that leads together to help us pull those projects forward and put them into the capital facilities plan. And again, once it's adopted, the first year does become the capital budget for the following year. I'm gonna go through the next few slides relatively quickly. This is the same information I shared with you at your meeting in August. Um but I just kinda wanna highlight some of the um projects and how they'll be funded. So the two thousand twenty-four projects listed here are either by department or division of the city. These projects total just under forty-seven million dollars, and the majority of the funds are going towards parks. Uh transportation and wastewater projects. The city plans to fund these projects through a variety of funding sources. Most of the sources are limited. By law or city policy on what the funds can be used for. For example, transportation benefit dollars, district dollars cannot be used to build parks and vice versa. Um and we are required to provide a balanced budget as well, meaning that we have demonstrated the ability to pay for the projects that are identified in the plan. So the CFP is updated annually. The first six years of the plan have to be uh financially constrained. Meaning we have a pathway identified for how we're going to fund these projects that's realistic. We don't assume we're gonna get eighty percent of our funding from grants if that's not our track record. So this slide shows the anticipated costs and the projects planned between two thousand twenty-four and two thousand twenty-nine by the city departments or divisions. And the estimated cost for the first six years is two hundred and sixty million, well, two hundred and sixty point seven million dollars. This slide shows the um anticipated amounts needed by year for each of the departments or divisions. Um for the years two thousand twenty-four through twenty-nine. It's essentially just another way of looking at um the data from the previous slides. And actually, I'm also gonna show you this one, which is um kind of a breakdown for each of those first six years. But the fun part is really where we start looking at what's that money gonna be used for. So we will um through a variety of funding sources, we'll have the capital budget for parks at about fifteen point seven million dollars. And the majority of that funding is made up of state grants, impact fees, and funds from the Olympia Metropolitan Parks District. Some of the projects to highlight include Armory Creative Campus Phase One. Um Yelm Highway Community Park Construction, Grass Lake Nature Park Trail Construction. And Kaiser Woods Park Construction. For transportation, the amount of uh two thousand twenty-four projects is approximately ten point eight million dollars. The majority of that funding is coming from federal grants. It's important to note that many projects may or may not physically begin construction in the year they're listed. Many projects require funding over multiple years in order for us to be able to pay for them. One such example is Phone's Road, which includes approximately three point one million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. Um but will certainly cost more than that in order to complete its construction. Other projects to highlight include Fourth Avenue and Plum Street Bicycle and Pedestrian Safety Improvements. Boulevard Road Trail Crossing, uh bound downtown bike corridor, Boulevard Road Sidewalk, Elliott Avenue Sidewalk. Um a sidewalk repair project uh for six hundred thousand dollars. And the annual chip sealing and crack sealing uh projects. One of the things that I think is exciting is the six hundred dollar, six hundred thousand dollar um sidewalk repair project. Um a a hundred thousand dollars of that will be used to do an inventory of needed repairs. And five hundred thousand dollars will be used to start that repair work. For general capital facilities, um that ju- that typically covers um capital improvements to city-owned buildings. In two thousand twenty-four, the city proposes just over two point five million dollars for this category. Um it will include doing a buildings condition assessment update, new siding at the Children's Hands-on Museum. Um EV charging infrastructure at the maintenance center. And some uh maintenance and accessibility improvements um at the Olympia Center. And then also some restroom upgrades at the um Timberland Library. For the su- fire department, we don't have any capital projects in two thousand twenty-four or two thousand twenty-five planned. Um but we do have some over the first six years of the capital facilities plan. Um there's a total of twenty-five point five million dollars planned, um which would include some new fire apparatus and a new fire station. For drinking water, um we're looking at just under six million dollars, and that includes things like small diameter pipe replacement. And a water main construction on Phone's Road, uh Boulevard Road Reservoir Rehabilitation, and Briggs Well Development. I know I'm going through these kinda quickly, if that's okay. Um for wastewater or our sewer system, we're looking at um planned projects at just over seven million dollars. Um it includes some septic to sewer conversion, some upgrades at the Old Port One Lift Station. Um some sewer pipe lining and a capacity upgrade along Fourth Avenue, parts of Fourth Avenue. For storm and surface water, we have um just under one point five million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. And some of the projects to highlight would include uh Culvert on Frederick Street. Uh conveyance construction on Pear Street, water quality retrofits on Braun Avenue. And downtown flood mitigation in response to sea level rise. Waste Resources is also one of the prog- uh programs that has a big project that requires funding across multiple years. So just under two point five million dollars is planned for two thousand twenty-four. Um but the project itself will total about fifty-three million dollars, some of which has already been set aside. Both of the school districts have recently submitted their capital facilities plans to us. Um Olympia has a history of incorporating their capital facilities plans into the city's CFP. Um and this allows us to collect impact fees on behalf of the school districts at the time of new development. Uh for two thousand twenty-four, both school districts are proposing uh increases to their impact fee at dollar amounts. This is where I wanted to spend more time. Um so going through the public process, we did receive um comments. Uh we, last year, you may recall, we see, we received a lot of public comments on the capital facilities plan. This year, we only received one in writing and two from people at the public hearing, but I just kinda wanted to give you a sense of what those kinds of comments were about. Commenters were supportive of the city's early action to address sidewalk issues. Um and so you'll see that they were um complimentary of that, and they still had the majority of their comments focused on. Um bicycle and pedestrian uh facilities or improvements. It's important to note that the transportation staff at the city continues to work on a proposal for increasing funding. For bicycle and pedestrian infrastructure, and will be bringing that forward to the city council at its meeting on November fourteenth. Several of the utility, or several of the advisory committees also review the the capital facilities plan each year and offer comments. Um so I have comment letters attached to your packet from the Utility Advisory Committee. Parks Recreation Advisory Committee and the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee, and then also the Planning Commission. And I'm gonna talk about. The UAC, Prac, and BPAC first. UAC was supportive of the utilities chapters. Um and they found that they were well-aligned with the master plans and in support of the comprehensive plan. Uh Parks Recreation Advisory Committee was supportive of the Parks Chapter, but did recommend that future CFPs consider inflation. And BPAC was supportive of a sales tax increase for bicycle and pedestrian improvements. And a shift in funding that focuses more on white, on walking, rolling, and bicycling. They had um recommendations for um. Additional recommendations to address greater alignment of policies and projects. Greater use of green, of green paint in support of our low-stress networks and city priorities. Greater use of green, of green paint in support of our low stress networks and city priorities. Um, addressing speeding through infrastructure improvements and using an equity focused approach. And metrics that measure system completeness. The Planning Commission has a slightly different focus. Um, they look at the entirety of the CFP. And they're also tasked with um, soliciting public comment and holding a public hearing. So they did hold their public hearing last month. Um, and in consideration of all of that and the, the Planning Commission had a um. Finance Subcommittee to, to review it in detail, um, they issued their comment letter. The Planning Commission is in support of the CFP as it's in general alignment with the cap, the comprehensive plan. Um, but they did call out that they would, it's not necessarily as consistent as it should be. In regard to active transportation and they feel that that remains underfunded. But the commission offered support for increasing sales tax for funding bicycle and pedestrian improvements. With an added recommendation that such funding be directed to capital sidewalk and bicycle improvements. And repairs that aren't associated with a, other major roadway projects. Other recommendations of the commission are to improve performance measures and to um, connections of projects to adopted strategies and goals. Identifying the total project cost. Including a map to show where planned projects are located. Providing a summary or budget of budget history for projects. And providing additional information about funding such as the ending balance for the previous year. Limitations on funding uses and information around each of the funding sources. So that is what I have for you this evening. I'm happy to answer any questions or allow you to uh, continue with your public hearing.
Thank you Joyce, that was very clear and uh, include a lot of information. So. Going to open it up to council members, I got a council member partially followed by council member Payne.
One Joyce, just a big shout out, reading through this packet, how you handled the questions and the answers was excellent, very clear. And you went back to the finance committee and a lot of our questions, you answered them there. So I greatly appreciate this format. And um, I don't have any specific questions. Well, I, I lied. Um, the ADA uh, consideration and inflation considerations, is that built into our budget model? In other words, when we're asking. Our budget to be conservative, are we saying it's a three to four percent inflation rate? What are we saying as we're building this model?
I'd have to check with Paul to see kind of what their assumptions are in terms of how they're building an inflation into their, their CFP estimates.
Cause I, I do agree with that. Uh, we should be looking at that in, in terms of our budget, our whole budget, not just this CFP. Um, so and also ADA, I, I worry with a twelve to twenty year timeframe, it's sort of like painting the San Francisco. Golden Gate Bridge, they get the one end and they have to go back and do it again immediately. So the things that we put in twelve years earlier have to be repaired. So building that in as well.
Thank you for your comments and I will point out that um, the inflation issue came up last year as well in the planning commission's letter. So. At least if we could provide information about that in the CFP, that would be helpful to reviewers, I think.
Thank you, Councilmember Payne.
Yes, hi Joyce, thank you. Um, I just have a question about the three hundred uh, thousand dollars for the building conditions assessment. Is that all city owned buildings or certain buildings?
I believe it's all city owned buildings. They typically do this about every five to ten years. I believe it might be more frequently than that.
Perfect, okay. That was my next question is how often? Um, and um, I also just wanted to thank the Planning Commission for their recommendation of. Um, supporting funding for sidewalks, um, which excludes uh, you know, major roadway projects. So, thank you, Planning Commission.
And I've got Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you Mayor Selby and yeah, I'll, I'll echo that Joyce. It's really nice to see. Both funding and a, a really reasonable citywide approach to sidewalks that'll get us to a, I think an equitable. Way to spend tho- those funds into the future. So, um, and I, I apologize for this being a late comment, um, because I missed the. Original proposals on the, on the CFP, but I thought we were waiting. Until we have a fire chief and do some planning around. The strategic approach to the fire department before we put a fire station in the CFP.
Yeah, we've had a lot of conversation around this item. I think it's, it's really in there as a placeholder because it's so far out in two thousand and twenty nine. Uh, a lot of things have to come to pass. There's a conversation with the, with the council around annexation that will happen here. Um, and just at the, at the end of this month about moving forward with the conversation with the county and your local, that would have to come to pass. Um, as, as you mentioned, I'm bringing a new fire chief on board. I'm really looking forward to them doing some strategic planning work. With the council and the community and firefighters. So right now I just see it as a placeholder that could very well change in future CFPs.
Okay, thank you. I, I think it's important that, for in my mind in those comments that you just made to make sure that that strategic planning is. Is tied to the facility's need and the expansion into the possible annexation, right? And so. How does, how does that look? Um, and then the other comment, those um, I was just looking at the school. Uh, impact fees and so right now we have sixteen hundred and four more seats than we have students in our school district. And we're projected for a decline. And so. When I look at the. Their capital facilities plan, it's hard for me to pull apart what is. Allowable in impact fees within that whole plan, when I just read the impact fee section, which is not project specific. Can you help us understand how we're justifying that kind of growth or maybe this is. A question for the school board or the school district uh, when they're in the room.
It would probably be something I would suggest speaking with the school district staff about. Um, my understanding is they were both just recently adopted by their boards. So I don't know that I could provide a specific reasoning or response to that question.
Okay, yeah, and I would just say the growth is counter to the other conversations I'm hearing in the community.
Yeah, yeah, that, thank you. That was a question I was going to ask as well, but we will be hearing from someone from the school district. Sounds like. Future date, is it in December?
Yeah, as part of the impact fee discussion, um, we'll be hearing from the school board.
Okay, uh, so could you give them a heads up that we're going to want that explanation? As well as uh, they have in the past, you know, they have a different uh, facilities person now, but in the past they would have. Like a chart of, you know, like the last five years of all the different fees, because they, they fluctuate quite a bit.
Yeah.
So it'd be nice for us to have that, that context for.
All right, thank you. I'll pass that along. And both districts have new staff this year, so.
Oh wow.
I'll give them a heads up.
Well, we'll, we'll um, get them oriented really fast. I did have one last question regarding the six hundred thousand dollars allocated for. Uh, sidewalks and the, it said two thousand and twenty four up there? So six hundred thousand dollars i- next year?
Yes.
So the hundred thousand dollar condition assessment for sidewalks. What I heard is that one, we're not going to do anything until we get that back. And then two thousand and twenty five is when we'll actually start putting money into this.
My understanding is that the conditions assessment will be done in two thousand and twenty four. And five hundred thousand dollars will be allocated towards some of that work. Um, perhaps Sophie might want to respond to that question?
Cause yes, we have five hundred thousand dollars to spend on sidewalks next year while the condition assessment's coming up. That's interesting.
Yeah, Sophie Stimson, Transportation and Public Works. Um, yes, so we are doing two things parallel. We'll do the assessment. And then we'll also be spending five hundred thousand dollars on doing some actual repairs. And so both things will give us some information that will help us make a broader policy decision. Probably in two thousand and twenty five or twenty six. So we'll have the data from the inventory, the assessment. We'll also have some experience with a contractor. Doing a large number of repairs or what we hope will be several repairs, yeah.
Right, right. So, but you don't, don't know which sidewalks you're going to be focused on for those five hundred thousand dollars.
Um, we are going to be focusing on areas where we have the highest volume of pedestrian traffic. So the downtown. Our major corridors leading in, out and out of the downtown that are also transit routes. So.
Right.
Highest volumes of pedestrians will be our focus.
And we might be hearing more about that in the tip or the transportation i- in um, improvement plan later on.
It is in the tip, um, but it will not be um, something that Joey addresses in a lot of detail, but. He and I can certainly answer any more questions you have about it.
Yeah, we just, we, obviously we hear a lot about sidewalks, so just had to kind of highlight that.
Thanks.
All right, I thi- oh, Councilmember Drone.
Sorry, I was hemming and hawing whether I wanted to ask this question. I figured I might as well while you're here. Um. So uh, we talked with um, uh, Cheryl Heywood not long ago about the library. And we've got the three hundred thousand dollars to go into the uh, upgrades around the restrooms there. And I'm just curious, like. How much time does that buy us on that building? And I'm just kind of like, sorry, maybe not a fair question for you, uh, you know? Um, I, but if anybody knows, like, you know, I just know that that building is just. Uh, reaching the end of its life and I just, at what point are we putting money into a building that needs to be replaced? Uh, so.
I'm going to open that to the floor if anyone would like to answer that question.
I- is that library on the historic registry yet?
Good evening, Councilman Mayor. For the record, I'm Mark Russell, Public Works Director. I'm going to have to get back to you on the answer to that question. If it will buy us some time, but I don't have an exact, so I'll talk to our new facilities manager about. What the thought is for how long that'll extend the life of that facility.
Okay, I'm not opposed to it being in there. I just want us to be like looking forward to. So that we get as much as we can out of that investment, but we're also looking at the next steps for a downtown library.
Understand, my understanding is, you know, this is an immediate need that we need to take care of. But also keep in mind that we don't overdo it as well, but I'll get back to you with, with a more specific answer on that.
Thank you.
All right, are we done? Ready to open the public hearing?
Thank you Joyce.
Okay, at this time I'm going to open the public hearing on the preliminary capital facilities plan, item five A on tonight's agenda. We have four people signed up. They're all remote. So for public hearings, for the public's understanding, we do three minutes of comments for public hearings. So uh, we would need to reset the online clock to three minutes for our. Commenters here, so I'm going to start with uh, Larry Jezza followed by Lee Reiner.
Larry's traveling.
Um, second time, my name's Larry Jess and I'm speaking tonight now as the Chair of the Olympia Council for Neighborhood Associations. We believe the sidewalk projects in the CFP before you are a good start. And urge you to continue shifting our city's policies and funding to recognize sidewalks as an integral part of our transportation system. Sidewalks are the critical component to developing viable and equitable alternatives to car travel. Neighborhoods are pleased to see the major investments on Elliott Avenue and Boulevard Road uh, for two thousand and twenty four. We urge you to increase your commitment and spending for maintaining the existing sidewalk investments. Particularly where the deteriorated condition of the sidewalk results in the inability of people. Especially those relying on assistive devices to travel safely. The decision to reprogram two thousand and twenty three resources for sidewalk conditions survey is also welcome. We also agree with the staff analysis that a fair, more effective and more equitable approach to funding sidewalk maintenance is needed. And will require the city stepping up its responsibility for maintenance throughout the city. And this is important, throughout the city, not just downtown, which I believe that, which I believe. All that is included in the current CFP is for those high priority downtown areas. Should the council vote to increase the sales tax by ten to a percent, it should go for sidewalks, not roads. We look forward to working with the city to help set priorities and work creatively to get the greatest value from the funding. And suggest a joint neighborhood community forum for the first quarter of this year. We also hope that the city's planning, planned hiring of an additional staff person will be used to create the capacity. To apply for additional sidewalk grant opportunities because more money is needed. Unlike roads for cars, sidewalks are the human scale transportation element that ties community together. Unlike roads, they're enablers, not separators of person to person engagement. Engagement that is essential to building stronger neighborhood connections. Thank you for your hard work and creative work on this issue.
Thank you. Next we have Lee Reiner followed by Karen Mesmer.
Lee is not signed up.
All right, thank you. We'll just go straight to Karen Mesmer followed by Jim Lazar.
Karen is traveling.
Hello, council members and Mayor Selby. Um, using the capital budget. Uh, the implementation of the transportation master plan needs to move more quickly. If a parent participated in the survey for the transportation master plan in two thousand and eighteen, when that was being developed. When their, that their child was, let's say, in second grade at that point, that student is now in seventh grade. And before the end of this CFP, that student will graduate from high school. Will they ever have safer walking or cycling conditions during their school years? In order to get to school or go see their friends? Your appointed advisors on the Bicycle Pedestrian Advisory Committee and the Planning Commission have asked you to make different choices. To prioritize walking and cycling safety. The Planning Commission recommends that you prioritize the new money from a tax increase to focus more on walking and cycling. The BPAC pointed out the alarming increase in fatal and injury incidents for people who are walking and cycling. They stressed the urgency of addressing excess speed with an increased focus on safety. The Council of Neighborhood Associations is asking for action on sidewalks. This change to the budget priorities cannot wait another year. There is plenty to do without waiting for the next study to be complete. You ask your advisory committees and the public for our thoughts. You should be hearing us loud and clear. You can and you should make changes to the budget after the hearing and before you adopt it. Please make adjustments for the entire CFP and for the first year and beyond. To put a higher priority on safety for people who are walking and cycling. Thank you.
Thank you. Our last person signed up for the five A public hearing is Jim Lazar.
Jim is traveling.
Hi, Jim Lazar, nineteen oh seven Lakers Drive Southeast. First, I want to compliment the Bicycle and Pedestrian Advisory Committee and Planning Commission for their excellent work. On this CFP and their recommendations to you. These are your staff. You hire them. You, they report to you. Unlike the city manager's staff, which you don't hire and which does not report to you, they are your advisors. You need to listen carefully. And implement their advice. We'll talk about a couple of things in the CFP. Uh, the first is impact fees. These are summarized beginning on page two thirty nine. Uh, but there's some serious omissions. First, there are no fire impact fees shown. You're planning a new fire station, a major capital expenditure. You have a funding mechanism available to you to do that. Had you retained the existing fire impact fees that were in effect two decades ago. You would have more than five million dollars available towards fire capital. Such as this new fire station. I urge you to please restore fire impact fees in this. Uh, package so that at least we don't lose any more. Revenue from this important revenue source to help pay for our fire capital needs. Second, I think this is just an error in putting the document together. There are no transportation impact fee revenues shown in pages two thirty nine to two forty of the CFP. There's a transportation administration fee, but not the actual, you know, four thousand dollars a dwelling unit. Uh, contributions to pay for future road capacity. Uh, there are lots of projects to spend that money. Uh, but there's just some kind of a hiccup in the production of the document. It doesn't show. The balances, it doesn't show the past year revenues and it doesn't show uh. Uh, how much uh, i- is coming in in transportation impact fees. Turning to page one oh eight, there is no general fund money shown for road repairs, for street maintenance. This is wrong. The purpose of the transportation benefit district was to replace the motor vehicle excise tax funds. General fund money was always expected to be an essential part. Finally, we were told that this was the day for the public. On the sales tax increase for roads and bicycle and sidewalk. I don't see it on the agenda. I'm a little surprised. It was announced at BPAC. Thank you by your staff, by, by your city manager's staff.
Thank you. That concludes people that signed up ahead of time for a public hearing. Uh, we always offer the opportunity for anybody in the audience uh, to come up and speak and participate in a public hearing. In this case, it's for item five A, which is the Capital Facilities Plan. Is there anybody here in the audience? I think everybody in the audience already is speaking about something else, but uh, is there anybody in the audience that would like to make a public comment during this hearing? All right, I'm gonna close the hearing. And are there any additional comments from the dais regarding what we just heard? All right, we're gonna move on to item five B, which is another public hearing. This one's on the Transportation Improvement Program. And I'm gonna invite forward Joey Jones, who is our Transportation Project Engineer, to tee this one up for us. Hi, Joey.
All right, thank you. Uh, good evening, Mayor Selby, City Council, and members of the public. My name is Joey Jones, and I'm a Public Works Project Engineer in the Transportation Group. Also, Sophie Simpson is here, the Transportation Director, and she can help uh, answer any questions that we might have on the 2025 to 202030 uh, Transportation Improvement Program. Uh, throughout this presentation, I will refer to the Transportation Improvement Program as the TIP. Uh, the TIP is a document that we submit to the Washington State Department of Transportation. Olympia is required to submit a tip to communicate communicate planned transportation projects to the state, and it also allows Olympia to apply for federal grants. The TIP identifies projects to improve the city's transportation system, and this tip is a reflection of the 2024 Preliminary Capital Facilities Plan, or CFP. Essentially, the same list of projects that are same list of transportation projects and funding sources are shown in the TIP and the CFP. Both the CFP and the TIP are updated annually to reflect changes to the timing of a project, the status of project funding, and also to add new projects. Because they reflect the same projects, the TIP is presented to the City Council for adoption alongside the CFP in the fall of each year. Attached to the staff report, you'll find two documents, a summary of all the TIP projects in a user-friendly format, as well as a more detailed official tip document that's required by WashDOT. The TIP is not set up in project priority order. Rather, first listed are individual projects that have secured or pending grant funds. Next in the list order are the annual programs that are also shown in the CFP, and I'll touch more on this later. And lastly, are parks trail projects? Because trail projects also have a transportation function, they are listed in the TIP. Park staff proposed trail projects for the TIP so that they can be eligible for grant funding. I'm going to touch now on the individual projects in the TIP that currently have grant funding at this time. The first is Mottman Road, um, major reconstruction project. This project includes sidewalks, enhanced bike lanes, street and pedestrian lighting, enhanced crossings. Uh, it also includes a new pedestrian and bike shared use path on the north side of Mottman Road uh, with including a separated bridge structure for pets and bikes to cross Percival Creek. This project will be designed and construction with about $7.6 million in grants from WashDOT's Connecting Wash Connecting Washington Program, and construction is targeted for 2026. The next is Phones Road. Um, these improvements will include sidewalk and separated bike lanes on both sides of phones, crossing improvements at the Karen Fraser Woodland Trail, and a compact roundabout at the South Home Depot driveway entrance. This project is slated to begin construction in next year in 2024, and there's about $5.1 million in grants from various state and federal agencies that will help that construction. Uh, the next project is the Northwest and Southwest Bicycle Neighborhood Bicycle Boulevard Project. This project is going to create a bike corridor um, from the extents on the north end from of Thomas and Mirhead and connecting to the south uh, at the Decatur Street Pathway at the southern terminus of Decatur Street. This project includes pavement markings, wayfinding signs, destination signs, striping, traffic calming, and a new shared use path at Woodruff Park. This project will be designed and constructed with nearly $900,000 in grants from WashDOT's Safe Routes to School Program, and the construction is targeted for 2025. Uh, the last project is the Grass Lake Nature Trail. This project will construct an asphalt multi-use trail through Grass Lake Nature Park uh, from Kaiser and with a connection into Harrison Avenue. This project is slated to begin construction next year, 2024, and has about $500,000 in grants um, from the State Recreation and Conservation Office. As I mentioned previously, the TIP also represents the six annual transportation programs that are also shown in the CFP. Uh, as a reminder, these six programs are bicycle improvements, intersection improvements, street repair and reconstruction, major street reconstruction, sidewalks and pathways, and access and safety improvements. Having these uh, having these programs allows us to apply for grants for the individual projects that are listed within the annual annual programs, and from information on the individual projects that are within these programs, that can be found in the CFP. So in conclusion, um, the city manager's recommendation is to hold the public hearing tonight. The City Council is scheduled to adopt a resolution approving the 2025 tip on December sixth, 2023, the same night as the CFP adoption is proposed. So on that note, I'll turn this back to City Council for the public hearing unless there's any questions.
Quick question, Joey, is it uh, up for adoption on December fifth?
Oh, yeah, that's probably correct.
Okay, that's it. Yes, it's Tuesday. All right, I'm gonna start with Councilmember Partially.
I have a two-part question. The first part is, you know, I understand the the utility of phones in Mottman. We're actually gonna get more sidewalks and safe bike lanes. Of a project like that, which is the most expensive redoing the road or building in these sidewalks? That's my first question, and bike lanes?
Yeah, that that's a multifaceted question, really. Um, it really kind of depends on what you're doing to the road. So on Mottman, by far, the improvements will be the the new sidewalks, the new bike lanes. The actual road construction itself is is just a simple overlay, which is just a grinding off kind of some of the old asphalt and putting in a new asphalt, which is relatively a cheap improvement. So most of those improvements will go into the the side. Most of that cost will be in in sidewalk uh, infrastructure. Um, on a project like Phones, um, uh, honestly, because of the right-of-way needs on Phones, uh, to add in that sidewalk, I would say, again, a lot of that cost goes into the sidewalk just because of needing that extra space for the sidewalks and bike lanes. Um, while Phones is a full reconstruction because the the pavement has deteriorated to the point where we can't just do an overlay, it needs a full reconstruction. Due to the the nature of the width of our available right-of-way, um, that you can argue that the sidewalk cost is is a large portion of the cost. But as far as specific numbers, I can't give you those right here off the top of my head.
That's perfect. That was just more generality. Sixty thousand foot level is perfect. Um, this my follow-up question then is, we we're hearing loudly from the community and we heard from our climate program manager that we have a lot of work to do and not two, 10 years from now, now. When we're building in these and doing these projects like Phones and Mottman and in planning future roads, are we looking at reducing the number of lanes and reducing the emphasis on our car travel um, in these projects so that we can actually maximize our dollars? Does that make sense? Because the community is asking us not to put more roads in, but to put more sidewalks and bikes in. And when we're restoring a a road, a right-of-way to do that, are we also reducing the number of lanes? Because I think that's what we're hearing.
Yeah, there are, there are, um, uh, you know, maybe Sophie can address it a little bit better, but I I will start, and if she wants to jump in, she can. But we do have in our transportation master plan, uh, what we call reconfigurations. Um, those are streets that we have kind of slated uh, for in future resurfacing projects. We will um, reconfigure the the lane allocation. So that could be reducing lane widths, that could be reducing number of lanes in order to make room for uh, enhanced bike or pedestrian facilities.
All right, thank you. Any other questions from the dais? Uh, Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Just a quick clarification. So I really appreciate the At-a-Glance versus the state form. Um, but the numbers that you read were all quite a bit higher than what's on the At-a-Glance. So is that a smaller portion of the time period or just help us with the difference?
Yeah, so some of that difference uh, probably be comes from that the fact that this this tip is the 2025 tip. So those numbers I was listing includes the entire grant. So some of that grant may be spent in 2024, which this tip is 2025.
Great, thank you so much. Uh, this time, I'm gonna open the public hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program. We have five people signed up to speak remotely. Again, they have three minutes. There's a countdown clock on the screen to help them with their timing, and we'll start with Larry Jezza, followed by Lee Reiner.
Larry's traveling.
I don't think he went far.
Well, I didn't. Thank you again. I'll make this very short. As you make improvements to the CFP, and I hope you've been hearing from the public and and yourselves about the needs of changes to the CFP, and as you do so, make the you'll have the tip change accordingly. I understand your tip has to follow your CFP. We're changing our thinking about transportation, and we need to change the way we budget for them too, and see them reflected in the tip. And I I want to second Karen Mesmer's point about the need for moving quicker on making these changes. Um, I thought it was a a rather dramatic statement, and I think it was spot on that uh, somebody today in school will graduate before they get a chance to see many of the changes that are being proposed. We 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 need to move faster than that. Thank you.
Next, we have Lee Reiner, followed by John Newman.
Both Lee and John have not signed up.
Okay, next we have then is Karen Mesmer, followed by Jim Lazar.
Karen is traveling.
Again, I'm Karen Mesmer. Uh, yes, the tip does reflect what's in the CFP, so I would make the same comments about the tip as I did earlier about the CFP CFP with a few extra notes here. Uh, the state and federal governments are offering grant programs that will help pay for walking and cycling infrastructure. The Transportation Master Plan is a really good start to know what we need to do. So we have a lot of lists in that master master plan. But the next step is really to have those lists packaged up in such a way that they're large enough to warrant making an application for a grant. Uh, there there must be a way to bundle the safety project so that you can make an application large enough to warrant the, frankly, the red tape that's involved with the grant from the state or the feds. And I I think, you know, the staff has enough creativity to be able to make a a a list of projects that included sidewalk repair and ADA, for example. And going through that list, if you run into a slowdown or a spot where there's a problematic specific fix, you can skip that one and move on to the next one. Do that one with the local funds. Um, I realize that constructing more cycling and walking projects may mean more staff. Some of the grants even have funding for staff time to uh, work on the projects as well. So I really want to encourage you to think creatively about how also to go for grant projects um, for these uh, walking and cycling uh, uh, projects that need to be done. As Larry indicated, the tip should reflect the changes that you will make in the CFP in response to the community asking uh, for changes and and realizing that you can make changes to a budget. It that's why you have the hearings, and your CFP should reflect what you hear from your advisory committees and from the community. So thank you for holding the hearing.
Are you concluding?
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much for that, and we're gonna move on to Jim Lazar.
Jim is traveling.
Thank you, Jim Lazar. Uh, I'm very encouraged by the breadth of depth of the sidewalk and bicycle projects that are included in the TIP and, you know, including those that are bundled in with major projects. The city not long ago adopted a multimodal public service methodology specifically to allow the use of transportation impact fees for standalone uh, non-motorized transportation projects. I don't see any use of that here yet. Transportation impact fees have historically been on the order of $2 million a year. As the mayor said, people in our community really don't want more roads. We want better roads. And better roads means complete streets with sidewalks, bike lanes, street trees. Uh, and that's where the transportation impact fees can be spent now to make our existing roads much better. The this TIP does not reflect expenditures from the proposed 1/10th of 1% transportation sales tax. We were told uh, at BPAC meeting that this was the night for one of the first of two public hearings on that transportation sales tax. I was expecting to be here to support that tax measure. Uh, it somehow dropped off of the agenda. I'm not sure how that happened. One option that the council has that is not reflected in this TIP is to bond against the future transportation impact fees and bond against future transportation benefit district sales tax revenues in order to accelerate these non-motorized projects. Mr. Jezza spoke about the need to accelerate them. The advantage of bonding against those future revenues to build capital projects now in the short run is to take advantage of funding opportunities that currently exist in the bipartisan infrastructure bill that passed the Congress uh, in 2021. That's a lot of money available to state and local jurisdictions for capital projects. And if we can get some federal support, issue bonds and pay those bonds off with the sales tax that I'm expecting to be on the agenda soon uh, for council consideration, we can accelerate and we can meet the public's needs and desires for safer transportation. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for our participants tonight on item five B. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to the uh, Transportation Improvement Program as it's proposed? Is there anyone in the room that'd like to speak to item five B? I'm gonna close the hearing on the Transportation Improvement Program that takes us to item five C. Yes.
Can we just ask the city manager for a clarification on the transportation benefit district tax that's been brought up now in two po- in hearings in a row?
Okay, do we we have it on the calendar forward?
Yeah, thank you for that. I'm not I'm not sure where the the misinformation came from, so apologies to BPAC if they got wrong dates. This is currently on council's agenda for November fourteenth.
So November fourteenth, but there will not be a public hearing, or there will?
There is not a required public hearing for this council manic action, so it'll be in front of council for discussion um, on the fourteenth, and if you wish to move it forward, you'll be able to direct staff to prepare the ordinances to do that.
Great.
But but it will also be baked into our final budget public hearing. Right? By by association?
I don't know if we're gonna be able to bake it into the final budget public hearing. So let me just follow up with staff in terms of all the steps involved to put this into place.
Cool, thank you.
Uh, for a timeline, we've done this a couple of times. It takes like almost a year before you collect the funds, before you get fully funded.
We'll be bringing all this information forward on the fourteenth.
Okay, thank you. All right, item five C, which is another public hearing. This one is on the proposed operating budget, and I'm gonna invite forward our very own city manager, Jay Bernie, to lead us through this conversation before we open the hearing.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Again, for the record, Jay Bernie, city manager. Um, I'm looking for my clicker. There it is. Um, I'm here tonight, as I mentioned, to kick off the first of two public hearings around the operating budget. My presentation tonight will be very familiar to you. It'll look very similar to a presentation I gave just a couple of weeks ago. I'm not providing any new changes or updates tonight. Tomorrow night, I'll be working with the finance committee to start working through recommendations to balance the budget and take a lot of the questions we both heard tonight, that you'll hear tonight in this public hearing, uh, and the questions that came up a couple of weeks ago. We'll start those conversations. And then I'm gonna be back on October thirtieth with a with another budget update to start answering some of the questions and try to give you some thoughts between myself and the finance team about how we might balance the budget. I also want to point out that we typically have a full draft budget document available in time for our public hearings. As councils are aware, we've undertaken a significant changeover of our financial systems to Workday. We are still in the middle of that transition, which is taking a considerable amount of staff time. For tonight, we prepared a budget in brief, which is um, online and shared with council, and it's just a summary of the significant pieces of the proposed budget. Our finance team is working quickly as they can to get the larger draft budget document ready before our second public hearing on November fourteenth. I appreciate the councils and the communities' patience and understanding as we work through this process. It's always our goal to be as transparent as possible. The changeover of our financial system The changeover of our financial systems will provide a better transparency long term, but working through that transition in the short term is challenging, and our staff are doing the absolute best job they can to get us fully transitioned. The balancing process for 2024 continues to be difficult, and I highlighted this a couple of weeks ago. Um, our needs far outpace the resources and most needs expressed by the departments could not be funded. We continue to make struggle struggle making inroads on a long-term sustainable budget. And again, conversations that are going to last long beyond this budget year. Um, there is going to be, you're going to see there's limited expansion of programs. Uh, the department submitted just in sense of scale about $9.6 million of requests for additional funds to continue to deliver their services, and most of those are not going to be things that we can work into this budget. And I'll highlight some of those as we move forward. Aaron has shared this with the council on a number of occasions in in the past few months. Our 10-year forecast paints a difficult future as expenses are not keeping pace with revenues. I believe we have a path to get balanced for 2024, but absent some new revenue options uh either at the state level or a level lift conversation with our community, harder choices in terms of budget reductions lie ahead. Uh, just a quick recap on BLS cares funding. Um, there is money in the 2024 budget and includes funding for up to 23 FTEs to move that 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 those programs forward. We continue to hire positions. Um, about half those positions are in the hiring process right now. The other half of those positions will be in the hiring process early next year. Um, it's really about academy space and and training and moving all that forward. We've assumed no BLS, uh, basic life support system transport um revenues in the 2024 budget. And we highlighted this a couple of weeks ago. The FCS study says that we should be conservative in year one of this program, so we're doing just that. Um, it's it's likely that we may start to receive some revenues from that program in 2024, but again, we're taking a conservative approach within the 2024 budget. Um, and there's currently funding of $3.9 million, which council previously approved to start up that program out of your budget stabilization for 2024. In terms of our expenditure assumptions that are built into the baseline budget, they include a 4% wage increase um for our Teamsters Union, a 4.114% increase for Independence Asthma and IFF, 5% for IEOE that's driven by their contract. Uh, and then the Guild and the Sargent's contracts will depend on uh those negotiations, which are will begin um this year. Uh, medical insurance estimates, um, they're pretty dialed in at this point. Um, they're listed here. Um, and then our Washington City's Insurance Authority, our risk pool, those insurance rates are going up about 25%, and I think we've highlighted in the past, we've got a really difficult insurance market right now. And Finance Committee had a presentation on this not too long ago. Uh, all your other expenditures outside of the ones we don't control, I've asked the departments to stay status quo. So unless unless we're required to raise something or it's out of our control, all other costs are remaining at the same levels they were. This graphic really highlights what I was talking about earlier in terms of revenues not keeping pace with expenses. Our general fund revenue projections for 2024 are up 5%, while our expenses, general fund expenses are up 12%. Same view, but this is our total operating budget with revenues here up 4%, expenses up 6%. As we discussed a couple of weeks ago, um, I've had to make some hard choices for the 2024 budget to get us down to a manageable deficit that we can work through. That means several of the items I consider critical are not included at this point. Uh, there are several staff positions. We are a growing organization. Uh, and we're growing our programs as well. And many of these positions in legal, finance, human resources, information services are just a function of needing more staff to support the growth of our organization. And right now, um, I know they're asking us for them, and there's just there's just not room in the budget to to do that. You're going to see some limited ads, which I highlighted a couple of weeks ago, and I'll talk about in a minute. Um, and then the other one for me, and we talked a lot about this a couple of weeks ago, we're going to talk, continue to talk more about in this budget process is the transition um to LNI for our workers' comp claims. We, I highlighted a couple of weeks ago, we have $7.3 million in requests for new resources submitted by departments. Uh, I just talked about many of those, along with around $500,000 in requests from community groups and work that is a continuation of the Urban Agricultural Work Plan making its way through the Land Use and Environment Committee. And we're going to talk more at Finance Committee about about that one as well. And again, I talked about being a growing organization, so a majority of the FTEs you see here are really about managing our growth as a as a city organization. We also have some work to do outside of the 2024 budget with the Finance Committee and Council to fund new fire apparatus, establishing proper reserves for those um future replacements as well. So we have a lot more conversations to have um with the council and the community to get to and the finance committee to get to a balanced budget. But tonight, here's where we are. We started when I started meeting with departments in August, uh, we had a $14 million deficit. Uh, through some corrections and use of budget stabilization uh that we had not programmed in yet for the BLS cares, that dropped us down to just under $7.8 million of a deficit. We do have some limited additions to our budget which affect the general fund, including uh funding for our federal lobbyists, um, funding for to keep the youth council conversation moving forward. Uh, we'll talk more about that in future meetings. Um, I was able off the 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 list for legal department to add one paralegal in to help with the impacts of a lot of the the new programs and work that are going through the legal department. As council knows, this has been an ongoing request of legal department for the past few years to get some help. Some increases for our public defenders and pro temp judges, um, funding for ambassadors. Um, our workers' comp rates, separate from the LNI discussion, our workers' comp rates need to be adjusted. We need to adjust that fund. Um, there's money in the baseline to do that. And restoring longevity pay for our independent employees, which most of our our union employees have had that had that already restored. So that brought us up to, uh, when you add things back in, that brought us up to about 9.2. Um, and then we worked um in the increases that I talked about earlier around WCIA, um, our medical rates. We also increased our revenue projections. We'll probably continue to look at that. We'll probably have some additional revenue projections for you as we move to the budget process. Um, that brings us to um a deficit of about $6.7 million. And then, as I highlighted for you a couple of weeks ago, and and we'll begin to to dig into these with the Finance Committee uh tomorrow, you have some levers that I'm recommending that you could pull here to try to get us to a balanced budget, including a reduction in our building, repair and maintenance. As you know, we've been doing this at year end. We've been we've been feeding that. Aaron and I are trying really hard to get this baked into the baseline. Um, he had it originally in the budget and we've pulled it back out. Um, that's a proposal that we have for you. Um, we also are, again, trying to, as part of a budget sustainability process, get the the proper reserves built up within the Fire Department for their apparatus apparatus replacement. That was in the baseline. I'm recommending you pull it out and we address it uh year end and find another another process to do that. We do have some anticipated hiring process savings. I mentioned to you a lot of those BLS new firefighter positions are uh probably are going to come in the first part of the year. We're probably not going to see them on our books till till mid-year uh at the earliest. Um, we have a labor reserve that we have built in. We are doing um uh an analysis of all of our pay rates for all of our employees, and we've had some reserve there. But as I as I look into that, I think that's something that we can absorb within our budgets, and I'm talking more department directors about that. We typically carry a general fund contingency in our budget through balancing. Um, that that would come out now. That's a way to to get it balanced. Um, and then we, as I've talked about before, although we're planning for about $950,000 with the reductions at this point, we're still relying on about $2.7 million worth of fund balance, one-time monies to balance our budget for 2024. So when I talk about um a pathway for 2024, but a difficult pathway in future years without new revenues, um, that's exactly what I'm talking about. Um, a couple of other things I'll just highlight, there is a a public safety ballot measure that the county um is going to have on the ballot in November. If that passes, the city does receive about $2.4 million of revenue uh from that ballot measure. About a million of it um would could go towards funding our body cam program, which we funded with ARPA dollars. And and this is the first year it would hit our budget permanently, but we could allocate dollars there. It would still leave you capacity um to uh address um more positions within public safety, which is going to be probably what's going to come out of the the staffing study that's being done by your police department right now. Um, and if you, again, in that scenario, we'd be relying on about $1,007 of fund balance, not $2.7 million of fund balance. So we'll we'll know more about that as we as 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 that ballot proposition happens and in future updates to council. So that's what I have for you tonight. Just as a reminder, um, I'll be back here at council for another balancing update. On the 30th, we're going to dig in with the Finance Committee tomorrow on rates and PBIA and special revenues and property taxes. Those are also going to be coming back to council um in in future meetings. Uh, we are working towards a final balancing decision with council on November 21st. Uh, and um, and then and then all the documents come before you in early December. So that is what I have. Um, again, tonight is not a deliberation night. It's a chance to hear from the community to inform our budget options moving forward. I'm happy to take any questions and then turn it over to the mayor to open the public hearing.
Thank you, city manager. Are there any questions for Jay? I've got Councilmember Partially, who is also our Chair of Finance.
Um, I'm putting this on your to-do list because I know this is budget season. But BLS cares, the expected financing and yield revenue stream was done before 2022 with a consultant. I worry that our numbers are not correct, as well as the Medicare fund that is available that will be paying for this is not necessarily going to be 100% return on what we're getting. So it'd be lovely in at least early 2024 to get an update on what that costs are actually expected to be in 2023 numbers, not the 2019 numbers.
Yeah, absolutely. We're we're going to plan to have an update to Finance Committee on all of that and be talking with you about putting that on your work plan.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Madron.
Yeah, I've been thinking a lot around year-end funds. I forget what we call it.
Yeah.
But.
Fund balance.
Fund balance above reserve.
Fund balance above policy, right? Okay, okay. Yeah, yeah, yeah. Um, and I know I've been, uh, you know, a proponent of like, we shouldn't rely on that for things that are uh long-term uh or or ongoing expenses. Um, but I'm curious, tomorrow at Finance, we can get kind of a history of what we've had for those year-end funds. Um, because I know that we budget conservatively, and I've just been rethinking like, you know, if that's something that we can generally rely on. Um, but you know, it's it's kind of a cushion there in case we hit a rough year. Um, you know, I see the things that we pull out, the things that we put back in. Um, I just think it would be helpful for us to just understand like the history of, you know, what we generally see come, you know, April or May, um, and what, um, you know, maybe those aren't necessarily one-time funds. They're just, you know, something that we didn't budget for because we budget conservatively. I think I I think it would help the conversation some.
Yeah, I'll I'll see what we can pull together by tomorrow. Aaron's nodding his head over there, so we'll see if we can pull something together. The the unpredictability of of year-end funds, what's tough with that is what usually drives a lot of it is vacancies, right? So we intend to hire positions or people leave throughout the year and we have to hire, so we we end up with some salary savings, right? Um, that's a big portion of it, and that's that's very unpredictable. Uh, at times, the other unpredictability is um with shortages in public safety is overtime rates, right?
Yeah.
That's another.
Yeah.
But yes, we can put something together for you so we can kind of look at what's our normal history there around those things.
Yeah, and I'm not saying it's something that we should like rely on for certain that it's going to be there, but just to look at the history of what has been there. Um, and some of the um, some of the needs that we know we have coming up.
All right, back to Councilmember Partially and then Councilmember Cooper.
Is it possible that we could bring to Finance to the question we had about uh inflationary considerations in our budget? What what we're considering is inadequate inflation for goods and everything else during operating as well as capital facilities?
Yep.
All right, I've got Councilmember Cooper followed by Mayor Pro Tem Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Sylvie. Jay, can you just talk to to us for a minute about that gap as you filled it? Because like, it's a pretty significant budget risk for me to fill that gap with some of the, you know, contingencies that are one-time cash buckets that create a a a significant bout. And 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 so I think it's just good for us to be eyes wide open about what that looks like going from one year to the next and 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 create, you know, pushing that wall of of water, if you will, in in front of the city, because to me, it's a a more significant budgeting risk than I've seen in my time on the city council.
Yeah, I'll say in my time at the city, I think we're at a crossroads right now in terms of meeting community needs and expectations around new programs. We are, um, I'll just highlight, we're in a housing homelessness crisis. Um, there's a good portion of general fund budget that's associated with with managing that. Um, it's in the millions of dollars. We, um, you know, as we manage um risks to our climate and um our home through climate, those are things that the community is asking us to spend time and energy um to mitigate and make sure that we're doing our part. Um, the cost of public safety year over year in terms of transparency and accountability and making sure that we're doing all those things that our community wants from us and has even asked at a state level for changes to get made. So um, that's not my way of of complaining, right? That's just my way of saying that I think there's a lot of expectations on local governments in particular, some of which probably need to bear out at a state level. Um, I think local governments are being asked to do more and more all the time. Uh, and uh, which is why on most of our legislative agendas, we have items asking the state for more help and resources in lots of different areas. And so I think we are at a crossroads. Um, I'm, if I'm being honest and upfront, I'm I'm very concerned about the long term. I again, I think we can find a path for 2024, but absent a real conversation with our community about new revenues, um, levied little lift being one of them, or um a stronger conversation with the state around the cap on property tax and at least letting that grow with inflation. I I I just don't see, I mean, you know, the 10-year forecast that Aaron presents to you assumes nothing new is added. That that's a that's a that's a growth curve that says you don't add anything else. You just stay where you are. And we all know that's that's not a real a real path for us. So I I agree with you. I um, I'm concerned about it. Um, I will even go as far to say that, um, you know, the budget path that's in front of us right now really isn't consistent with all of our our financial policies. We're using one-time monies to balance, but we're in a really tough spot right now. And I think absent new revenue conversations, we're going to have to take this on in a more meaningful way and in a really difficult, challenging way in 2025 and beyond.
Thank you. Uh, now Mayor Pro Tem Gilman, joining us remotely.
From my living room. Hello. Um, I I just, I wanted to build a little bit on Councilmember Madron's question about, you know, what's what's the history of fund balance uh year after year? Um, and it's it's not that I think a whole bunch has to happen between now and the Finance Committee tomorrow, but we're also seeing budgeting as a 365, right? Every day of the year, we're building this. And I I I think it'd be really helpful if council had a a good picture of year-to-year budget comparisons and year-to-year staffing comparisons, including the rate of overtime used, including how we've come out with fund balance and council goal money uh year to year so that we might move from the reactive sort of, these are critical unfunded, you know, it's an emergency to a more proactive planning for um changes in both revenue and and uh costs of operating government. So I I just, I'd be interested in our building that into the budget process.
Okay, uh, Councilmember Partially.
To go along with that request of a Mayor Pro Tem Gilman, which I think is excellent. Um, and uh, Councilmate Cooper, I would encourage us to make sure that we define fund balance and reserve carefully for the public and what they mean. Um, because they're two different things. And we, one-time things out of fund balance means a very different thing than one-time things, uh, monies out of reserve.
Absolutely, absolutely. And and to make it even more meaningful for the community is we have two sets of reserves, right? We're required to have a 10% reserve, which we never, we hardly ever touch. And then we have a second reserve, which we refer to as our budget stabilization reserve. We have a lot more flexibility with that funding. And then on top of those two reserves, we can end up with fund balance that's above policy. So your policy says right now, your policy says we have a 10% reserve and we maintain another 10% budget stabilization reserve, and we've got some policies around that, which, as I mentioned, we're going to revisit at with Finance Committee next year. And then on top of that, um, for example, this $2.7 million I refer to, that's above those two reserves. That has tons of flexibility for council to use for lots of different uses.
All right. I think we've got everybody's questions. I had a couple of things because I was sick the last time we discussed the the budget. And I know with Finance Committee meeting tomorrow, this is just something to to consider. Since I've been in office, council goal money has always been like kind of an awkward thing. We've never been able to land on a a process for how to tap into it. And a lot of times we just don't use it then. And or it becomes like this kind of political football. It's like, what are we going to do with this? And so I would like council, I would like the finance committee to think about disbanding council gold money and putting it back into the general budget. And so it's something that the broader community has a voice in rather than just, you know, whatever one of us decides we want to spend it on. So just something to consider. Something else around council benefits, we just got a 5% raise. And we've never had a clear policy on travel stipends. So I'd like finance to consider like a budget for our travel. And our train, it's not training, to go to conferences. I know during COVID, all that shut down. And I think being able to go to train at a conference is so important for council members. And so it just be clear on what that what that stipend is a year. And it's like a use it or lose it, doesn't carry forward, and it has to be used for training. And then I think it's time, of course, to add one more thing to staff. But we have such a great process for doing community outreach now. And the year that we did a big community meeting around budget priorities and also educating the like, Councilmember Partially brought up, you know, what are these different buckets and how can they be used and the the color of money, as they say? I think it might be time to do that again. And it was so successful and people really, really appreciated it. It helped us. So that those are my three kind of feedbacks for for finance to consider.
I'll just a couple of them. Council gold money, we are going to bring our kind of a, I think we have up to an eight year history of the past eight years of how you've used it and what that looks like. So we're going to bring that to finance committee tomorrow so they can look at that for that conversation. And then I had a note, I'll 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 put this, I'm sure the finance committee is hearing it too, on the travel stipends for council. And then as councils are aware, we're planning your January retreat right now. And one of the significant items that the council is asked to be on your retreat agenda is to spend a significant amount of time on budget. I think, you know, how we address, how we talk with the community in the coming years, looking at in more in depth at what our revenue options are, kind of digging in more on some of these questions about our expenditures and where they land. I I like the conversation about year end because it 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 makes us really, really think harder about what's in our budget and whether or not we should make further adjustments. So I think we can have a larger conversation at your retreat as well around all these things to help inform kind of where we move forward. Because I think to Councilmember Cooper's point and many of yours, we need some bolder decisions made around our budget.
Right. Thank you. Any other, Councilmember Payne?
Yes, I, Mayor, I just have a question about, you know, why you might propose a disbanding of the council gold money versus looking at maybe the amount that we use. City manager, I believe we talked about my concern about a complete disbandment of the council gold funds. And really, the reason is is it is one of the few tools that we have as council members to take action on certain things other than referrals, to bring things forward. But also, like, for example, we use that money for the city's gun buyback program, for example. And so I I don't want to, I I don't know how I feel about a complete disbandment. I'll just leave it at that. But yeah, I I would like to see that the committee have that discussion on whether or not it's appropriate to completely disband or maybe revisit the amount.
Or revisit the process.
Or process.
One more time, maybe kind of put it through a referral where you have to have a more thoughtful, you know, consideration of how it goes and then also updates on how much is left. And I mean, that's more of like, we just have never known. And it's like, all of a sudden, something comes up and we're like, oh, you know, it's like a knee jerk. Well, we're going to do this. And I like, I just think going forward, I'll be gone, a more thoughtful process around council gold money if you choose to keep it in place. Because it's it is nice to have it for time critical or emerging issues. Councilmember Wayne.
Yeah, I I think this is just, I guess I'll just add my support because I I like how this is sort of evolving. The I was sort of gobsmacked to hear a disband. That seems a little, you know. So but absolutely that looking into the process, looking into should, you know, should it, you know, overall city budgets taking cuts, does it mean that that is up for, you know, a thought of of cuts and in years where it's where it's a pinch or not? But yeah, so I think the the finance committee members are hearing us all loud and clear here that just looking into the process. Yeah, yeah, because I don't know how I feel, you know, I probably just need to eat dinner also.
Yeah.
Into the season of long meetings. Rubbing power bar. All right, so I think we're good to go into the public hearing. Absolutely. Here we go. All right, so I am going to open the public hearing on the 2024 proposed operating budget. I have got three people signed up that are remote, and then I've got one person in chambers. So I'm going to start with the person in chambers because they've been waiting patiently most of this evening. So I'm going to start with Brian Windrope.
Good evening, Mayor Selby and other council members. We appreciate the chance to be with you tonight. I'm Brian Windrope, Executive Director with Senior Services for South Sound. And with me is Rebecca Hutchinson, our Home Share Program Manager.
Brian, real quickly.
Are we good?
Never mind. I got the timer over here now.
We good? Okay, that one seemed to be going. And we're here tonight to speak in support of a renewal of funding for the Home Share Program. You may recall that we started a pilot program back in 2021 with leadership support from the city of Olympia, the city of Lacey and the Regional Housing Council. And we are happy to report tonight that we're coming to the end of that pilot period. We've had tremendous success, which I'll let Rebecca speak more about. I'm I hearing the conversation tonight about the budget and hearing Jay speak. I have to say, as a longtime nonprofit executive director, I I have not worked in city administration, but I feel the pain, the tough choices that have to be made, and I sympathize with all of you making those tough choices as our public representatives. We do that in the nonprofit world all the time. So the Home Share Program, I'd like to emphasize before handing it to Rebecca, is, as you know, a niche program that that fits a critical need and it is incredibly cost effective, matching people who are able to provide a room in their home, keeping usually seniors in their housing and providing a a low cost housing option for people who are housing insecure. And so we hope that the city is able to, in this tight budget time, renew the funding that we've had before, now that the program has shown itself to be really effective in our community. So I'll hand it over to Rebecca.
Can I add just a point of process? So you don't, we don't have to use up all your time. I'm I'm going to have us restart the clock for Rebecca.
Oh, okay.
Right? So you're two separate speakers.
Okay.
And then Rebecca, for the record, we're going to need your last name.
Perfect. My last name is Hutchinson.
Great. Thank you. You can step over now.
Thank you so much. I'm Rebecca Hutchinson. I'm the Home Share Program Manager with Senior Services for South Sound. And I'm going to try to very quickly describe three really great success stories that we have for matches that we've made in our program. So I'll start with Janet and Beth. Janet has a property in Olympia that she was having a really hard time navigating the uneven ground, maintaining her property. And she really needed assistance in doing that task in order to continue living in her home. We were able to match her with Beth, who is a local artist also from Olympia, who was in a pretty terrible home share arrangement that she found on her own and she was seeking safe and affordable housing. We were able to match these two together. They both love art and reading, and they both had two cats that were very important to them. They've become really wonderful friends and they reported to me that they take the opportunity to talk about the benefits of the Home Share Program with anyone that will listen, which we greatly appreciate. And next month, we'll mark one year of their living arrangement together. The next pair that I want to talk to you about is Kate and Bill with Jeremy. Kate and Bill are a married couple that own a property in Olympia that they only live in half of the year. When they heard about the Home Share Program, they were really inspired to help someone in need and share their space. At the same time, Jeremy had a recent amputation that made it very difficult to safely move around his home. So he was looking for safe and affordable housing through our program. We were able to match them together. And now when Kate and Bill stay at their home, they're in the attached apartment of that home and Jeremy's able to utilize the main house. He always speaks very kindly about Kate and Bill and, of course, the Home Share Program for helping him to access safe and affordable housing. And as of now, their arrangement has lasted 14 months and counting. Finally, I want to talk to you about Sam and Greg. Sam is a disabled senior living in a trailer park in Lacey. He is legally blind and is very hard of hearing. And we were able to match him with Greg, who is a teacher. And at the time that he applied to our program, he was going through a divorce and seeking safe housing that he could afford on his own. When Sam and Greg met through Home Share, they realized pretty quickly that they could really enter into this opportunity to have a very mutually beneficial arrangement and really help each other out. So now Greg assists Sam with pet care and he has a short commute to work every day. And further, Greg is able to transition through his divorce with secure housing. And Sam can continue to afford to agent place in his home. Next month will mark eight months of shared living for those two. So I just want to say very quickly, I know my time's running out, a very sincere thank you for allowing us to operate in the community and to help the seniors that this housing crisis has really negatively impacted. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I think that worked out well to do it two separate.
You had a lot to share there. All right, thank you.
Any questions?
I, this is normally a process we don't go back. Yeah, sorry. All right, we are now going to go to our remote speakers. I'm going to start with Larry Jezza, followed by Jim Lazar.
Hello again. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Great. Okay, thank you. First, a process comment. I've been dialoguing with the city manager and the finance director today about how not being able to see a budget in advance is a real problem and diminishes the quality of the budget hearing. While I'm sympathetic about the IT project being the cause of this, I still haven't heard a commitment that a full budget will be available to the public before it is adopted and is needed before we can make informed comments upon it. So about that process, there are alternative ways to share decisions with the public that don't require a budget book with pictures and charts. Your budget in brief is a roll up of individual budget decisions that are already made, decisions that should be shared with the public in whatever form you have them to meet the substance and intent of the of the state law. Thank you about that part. Now on to the budget. I have just learned by email tonight that this budget has funding for the neighborhood matching grant program at the same $23,000 level it has been for as far back as anyone, including the staff, can remember. I doubt there was any other budget item that has been frozen like this. Despite population growth, inflation and greater demand for neighborhood projects and the desire for neighborhoods to do more outreach efforts to renters, this amount needs to be increased. The CNA recommends that the city budget for 2024 for the neighborhood matching grant be set at $1 per Olympian, which would be about approximately $57,000. In comparison, it is very much in line with the city of Lacey's budgeted amount of $60,000 for their matching grant program, which also works out to be a dollar per resident. This program is a value multiplier for the city. Second item I wish to address is the sidewalk maintenance funding. The last time I looked, the city budgeted only $11,000 citywide for maintenance. And I believe this usually was done in the operating budget. Without a budget, without a budget, I can only assume it's the same amount. As stated earlier, the city needs to do more and and budget more on this critical link in our transportation system. It would be a shame to miss this opportunity to act in 2024. Please add additional funds to the operating budget for much needed sidewalk maintenance. Show the public that the city is moving in the right direction while it works through the funding issues and recalibrates its thinking about what transportation mobility means. Most of all, the neighborhoods are ready to work together to achieve the shared vision for our sidewalks becoming the walkable, rollable, it will be a transportation component that the city and the environment needs. I want to thank you. Thank you again.
Thank you. Next, we have Jim Lazar. Jim is traveling.
Good evening again. Oh, if you're getting tired of hearing me talk, I am. It's hard to comment on a budget without a budget. So I'll comment on what should be in the budget and come back perhaps when there's a draft of a budget and comment on whether those things are included. The city has a long term financial strategy. It was adopted long ago. It hasn't been amended recently. It has a very clear policy. The first priority is to maintain what we have. A second policy is to eliminate programs, not cut them. Part one of the budget that comes to you in a couple of weeks should include full funding of maintenance, maintenance of parks, maintenance of potholes, maintenance of sidewalks, maintenance of buildings, maintenance of vehicles, fully funded and only after that. After you have addressed things like tripping hazards on existing sidewalks that the city pays out large amounts to people who are injured, let's fix them. That's part one of the budget. Part two would have staffing for programs, and that would include all police staffing, all fire staffing, all parks programmatic staffing, everything that's not maintenance would be in part two. And under the long term financial strategy, the council's budget balancing would happen on part two of the budget. You could rename the council goals money as council contingency money. I think that might make more sense because you don't actually know what those goals will become during the coming budget year. I'm a strong believer in having contingency in budgets. The city manager budget has grown faster than any other budget over the last 10 years. I think you need to look at that very closely. All the new programs have been built in there. Some things to consider eliminating, economic development program, that's simply not a city function. Second is the massive growth in the public relations staff, bloated from one person to at last count, seven. Can simply eliminate most of those positions. Finally, I would ask you to consider shifting all housing programs to the Thurston County Housing Authority. I think we ought to have one agency in this county that addresses housing and does it professionally with adequate staffing and for the entire county. Finally, the Home Share Program is a great program. It should be funded in part to with a budget after you have fully funded maintenance of our sidewalks and streets. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes folks that signed up ahead of time for the public hearing. Is there, there's not anyone. Oh, yes. Is there anyone in the audience? Yes. All right. I know I asked for a reason. So you have three minutes. Countdown clocks over my right shoulder.
Thank you. Good evening. I'll be brief so you can get to dinner. I really appreciate the opportunity to speak on the budget and or the proposed budget and some of the items there. My name is Sarah Moorhead. I'm the Executive Director of Thurston Conservation District, and I'm really excited to be here this evening. What I'm here to speak about is to express the importance and significance of the city's support for the Olympia urban farmland budget item. As we know, access to food is one of the top things that residents in the city are struggling with the most. And this budget item provides a lot of support for access to local healthy, fresh food that is culturally relevant, builds resilience, provides green spaces that support mental health, promotes economic benefits such as jobs, income and affordable food, and contributes environmental benefits such as pollinator habitat and habitat connectivity. This budget item builds on the last four years of work and investment between the city and the conservation district, looking at issues of food, security, equity and access. This proposal in the 2024 budget is the culmination of a lot of work and resources and is the beginning of a highly sought after community resource. Additionally, engagement in community gardens, which is one of the deliverables here, is a top entry point for people to access other city programming, such as involvement in camps. This budget item would also operationalize the city's existing commitment made on December 19th of 2017 when the city of Olympia passed a resolution calling for community gardens within a half mile of every resident. Those gardens could be on public or private property. And the resolution was part of that no net loss policy designed to enhance and protect the local food system, protect agriculture and farmland, encourage urban farming and increase and expand access to local food, reduce energy and environmental impact on our food system. We are leveraging the partnerships that we've already built through this project to deliver these services in a more cost effective and efficient way than the city can do so directly. uh, than the city can do so directly. We have a great network of partners that is complimentary and not duplicative uh, that we've built through our shared work together. Um, this is a way to provide those services to the community at a lower cost, which I know certainly uh, is relevant in the 2024 budget discussions. And I don't envy you guys for making this decision. Um, all host sites involve a lot of different community groups such as churches, daycares, head start programs, and it's an opportunity to engage and support veterans as well as our transitional housing community. We have a lot of gardens planned for the coming year. Um, and this work and this commitment from the city um, is necessary and required match for additional grant funding that the conservation district and our partners are applying for. Without it, um, I'm afraid that we can't continue this sort of focused intentional work within the city and the support the residents are asking for. Thank you so much. I appreciate your time.
Thank you. So that concludes our public hearing on the operating budget proposal. And without further ado, oh, Councilmember Cooper.
Yeah, Mayor, thank you, Marcella. I just want to say as a Thurston County Housing Authority board member in my private life that uh, I don't think they would be a willing acceptor of our housing and homeless programs. Our, our community has demanded that we step up to the plate in a significant way and they have funded that work. And so that, that's just one comment that I want to lift up from, from the, from the public hearing that we have. While we've grown programming in our city, we have greatly improved regional partnerships and how we build and provide housing and homeless services around the region through those partnerships and um, I, you know, communication is always our challenge, right? So more ways to tell the story.
Uh, thanks for bringing that up. You know, I think our housing program is a model across the nation and I have one of the things I am going to be doing is traveling to DC first week of November to speak at the White House. I've been asked to, you gonna be there? Awesome. Uh, yes. So we'll be talking about uh, Olympia's housing program as well as our climate program. So. Councilor Partially.
Um, just a, a couple of things. Um, I would like to hold up the fact that we do have seven communication uh, members in our uh, departments. And that has actually increased our ability to communicate things like what we are doing on homelessness and housing and public safety and um, you name it, climate. Without those extra people, one person cannot communicate well enough and the transparency would go down. So this is the first thing. The second thing is the city manager's budget oftentimes is the glorified council goal money. Cause when we ask him for big policy changes, he steps up and gives it to us and those, that's where a lot of his uh, extra budget comes from is us, not the city managers. So I just want to make that very clear that Jay is acting on our policies.
Thank you, Councilmember Drone.
While we're uh, offering some corrections, uh, we did update our long-term uh, finance strategy in uh, the, uh, just the last year and a half or something. Um, and that, that'll be published in our uh, uh, council workbook, uh, guidebook that we'll, we'll be uh, voting on soon. So. That's all.
Councilmember Wen. Certainly this is an interesting council meeting. Um, and with that, uh, sometimes a thing said can be, can be quickly lost because there's so many, you know, great things to absorb new and upcoming. Um, may I ask the city manager, because it was brought up a couple of times to talk about uh, the, um, that there, you know, there wasn't a budget link. And so what can people expect to see?
Yeah. So um, as I mentioned, and Erin and I were talking about this as well, and I, I shared this with uh, Mr. Jezza's and an email with him earlier today. If council members, we used to only have one public hearing on the budget. Um, and it will, on the operating budget, and it was the mid-November. Um, that was usually when we had it. About three years ago, um, we added a second opportunity for public comment around the budget, which is the one that you had tonight. We added an earlier one in the process. And so typically our finance team has until mid-November to get their preliminary budget document totally together and out and available to give you any time for the public hearing. We did intend and we always intend now that we have this earlier meeting to try to have that document available earlier. This year is just a year like no other as councils aware with the transition to workday. So we weren't able to get that, that document in time for this meeting, but what we did do instead is put the budget in brief. And I will just say, just to make a comment, I think there was a comment made at public comment that those are things that are already agreed upon. That is not true. Um, there are items in that budget in brief that um, are still proposals in front of the council, but until council acts on the final budget on the 21st are just proposals at this point in time that are in that budget brief, including all the utility rates that have not been in front of council yet. Um, impact fees, which we talked about tonight, and in specific, some of the proposals in the operating budget. So now that being said, well, that's my buildup to say that it is still our plan to have a preliminary budget document available in time for the November 14th public hearing so that the community has some more information to dig into like they're used to. Because of workday, it may not look exactly like it looks, has looked in the past, but all of the detailed information that we normally put out will, will provide to the community. So they have that. Uh, and I shared that with Mr. Jezza um, earlier today as well, that we will have that. Um, we're, we're planning to have that. This is just a one-off this year because of workday. We plan to get back on a more regular schedule with more regular information um, on a, on a sooner basis, sooner basis. Um, sooner than normal um, for our earlier public hearings starting next year. And I also want to highlight that um, it is always our um, effort every year to be as transparent as we can about the things that we're doing. And again, I would just ask for some grace and, and consideration from those in the community who are asking for something right now that we're working. Our finance team is working weekends and long days just to try to keep up right now. And again, I'm not making excuses. It's just the reality of where we are. Um, and uh, we're going to get there.
Thanks for that. Uh, reiterating again why we are going to be uh, getting more information on November 14th. Anybody else? Councilmember Wen.
Yeah, uh, just, uh, I just wanted to thank all of the uh, public commenters tonight. We've had a, a couple of public comment hearings. Um, but uh, I'm sure some of those folks are still on the line. Um, I am always impressed at how much care there is in the community. Um, certainly folks with very strong opinions. Um, but also finding the uh, I think the good things too. And I did hear uh, some of those good things um, through this. Uh, I'm glad that uh, there are eyes and ears out in the community that um, you know, sometimes it's almost like there's volunteer auditors, you know, so um, yeah, it's, yeah, it's really lovely. You know, we, so many communities don't have this type of engagement. Um, so I hope you'll be back uh, for, for the folks that are still on the call and, and others that might hear this later. I hope you'll be back on November 14th. Um, and um, yeah, I always appreciate hearing from you all. I, and I'm just amazed. I mean, uh, for some folks, if you stayed on all, like every single time there was a chance, you took it up and um, and, and there's something to be said about that. You could be doing anything else and, and I really appreciate it. Um, and uh, I, I learn new things from you. Um, yeah, thanks.
Thank you. Anything else before we move on to the next item? All right, 6A. We are on to review and approve the draft 2024 legislative agenda. And at this time I'll invite forward Susan Grisham, who's our legislative liaison amongst many other hats that she wears quite well. And this is a draft going into tonight, but we are going to be asking for a motion to approve. So staff can move forward with formatting.
So, um, good evening, council members. For the record, I am Susan Grisham and I'm here tonight as your legislative liaison. And I want to impress upon you that this is a preliminary 2024 legislative agenda to ensure that we're fully, fully capturing council's priorities for the upcoming session. Um, so I was before you in August, uh, when we had a wrap up of, of the last legislative session. And I took some of the topics I heard from there and the items from last year that were sort of rolling over into um, uh, next year's uh, priorities. Um, and I know the staff report um, lists the motion, which makes it seem very formal, but really what I'm looking for is consensus around the topics. Um, and which items you would also like on the front page this year of the agenda. And then on December 5th, I will come back with a final agenda for consideration that is designed and formatted. Um, and uh, will have gone through um, the process to hear, hear from council. So, um, the first item here I have is further legislative action related to climate change and statewide climate justice initiatives. Um, I, I in talking with Dr. Braff, um, these updates reflect um, what she shared with me, but also um, she's waiting to hear from regional partners on key efforts that they are advancing this year. So this miss list may be updated to reflect that, but she didn't have that information at the time. Um, so uh, on here is establishing a statewide home energy score program that provides a common framework and licensing for residential home energy assessments and disclosure to support residential energy retrofits. Establishing a nation, a statewide navigator program to provide information and resources to help communities navigate clean energy incentives and find qualified contractors for energy upgrades and retrofits and updates to land use planning that take into consideration climate change and resiliency. Next, we have uh, further state resources to address homelessness and affordable housing. Um, I did touch base with uh, Darian regarding this. Um, so continued state support for the operation and management of permanent supportive housing sites, including additional funding for the project at 303 Franklin Street, low income housing for people with dis, for people with disabilities. Continued state support for the rights of way initiative. State leadership and support for renter tenant protections, including rent stabilization and tenant screening. State resources for moderate and low income community members to achieve housing stability and pathways to homeownership. The creation of new tools, incentives, revenues and resources that cities can use to increase affordable housing supply to include condo reform. Next we have um, support for the evergreen basic income pilot program. We saw that um, go forward through the legislature last year and didn't quite make it home. So um, I heard last time that we did want that on our agenda. So programs to address issues of financial stability, particularly regarding the cost of rent, food and childcare. Um, continued uh, state mental health and behavioral health resources. We saw some increases in that last year, but we need much more. Um, further state leadership and funding to expand and create better access to community-based mental health and behavioral health resources. State investments in education, funding for professionals to enter the mental health and behavioral health fields. Designated state, state funds towards helping local governments fund and expand crisis response programs and help for families to get family members who are not minors into psychiatric care. Next we have uh, further support regarding public safety reforms. This was on our agenda last year, but funding to help cities with resources related to the ongoing implementation of unfunded and mandated public safety reforms. Um, for example, body cameras and uh, items towards the Blake decision. And then further legislative action to reduce gun violence. Uh, further state leadership is needed to put safeguards in place to prevent gun violence in public spaces, expanding the prohibition of open carry to all publicly owned facilities. And changes to the property tax levy lid lift. The current 1% as we know uh, restricts revenue growth. Um, money costs are increasing more than 1% per year. So we support raising the levy lid lift more than 1% for specific project doors and projects or initiatives and raising the levy lid lift based on the rate of inflation of one or 1% annually, whichever is higher. And then um, support for tax structure reform. Making the Washington state tax code more fair, adequate, stable and transparent. Improving Washington state's tax structure to benefit individuals, families and businesses in Washington state. And then finally, um, the item of the hour, uh, support for funding mechanism related to EMS and fire services. So I recognize this language needs some updating. The intent was not at all to make RFA council manic. That was not the intent. This item is to highlight the challenges we face as local governments and finding ways to pay for intent is to find council manic options for new ideas and partnerships and in no way is a reflection of the RFA. So um, I would love to uh, hear some discussion and, and feedback from the council. So we could further refine these items um, and, and come back to you with a uh, a refined and better put together a list.
Okay. So I'm hearing two things you need from us.
Yes.
You need us to give feedback on the words that are on these pages.
Yes.
And then you need us to prioritize within those.
What you want to see on the first page would be really helpful.
Yes, this is always a fun discussion. All right. So I'll go with Councilmember Madron, followed by Councilmember Partially.
Yeah, I have a, a few questions. Um, do you know if CCA funding is going to be allocated this legislative session or does that just happen in a budget year?
I do not know that, but I will find that information.
Oh, Climate Commitment Act?
Commitment.
Yeah. Um, so yeah, so some of the priorities that were listed in the, the, one of the early slides there. Um, yeah, that would be good to know if they're going to be allocating funding and we have some, uh, some things ready to launch. Uh, we'll, we'll want to jump on that. Oh, Dante said they're working on a website for it. Um, I, I, um, my thought on what I would like to see at the top. So when we talked about this last year, we talked about putting the levy lid lift at the top. And at the time we were like, well, we don't know if anything's going to move forward, but the dispute estuary, we know that there's going to need very focused uh, effort around that. So we moved that to the top. And then not only did we get some funding for the dispute estuary, but there was a bill in motion around a levy lid lift that will be reintroduced where it's at. So I think that is one that we should put back at the top. Um, and maybe you all agree. Um, and I, I'm concerned about voting on this document tonight because when, when I read this uh, around the funding mechanisms related to EMS and fire service, what even when I read that, I was like, wait, what is this? So I wonder if there's not um, a bullet to add under well, may, or ma- maybe it's a separate thing, but just being very explicitly clear that um, I, I think here it's jurisdictions in close proximity to one another. I, I, I don't know what this means if it's not an RFA. So um, I just want to say that I feel uncomfortable voting on that one without knowing what a clear ask from the legislature would be. So I don't know if you have thoughts on that or if somebody else from the, the dais does, but um, that's one I would actually like to take off unless we have clear language around it and I know what I'm voting on.
Understood.
All right. Uh, next I have Councilor Partially.
Um, I'm gonna kind of give you some of the things I'm thinking about and then prioritize. I'm gonna jump right in on the uh, EMS RFA. And I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna say we should, I'm gonna agree with Councilmember John, we should pull it. Partly because we're about to hire a new fire chief and I would really like to see what the fire chief can do with a strategic plan. Five, 10 years, what does this look like? Funding, everything. That may impact what we do, RFA, NOF, RFA, that kind of thing. So I would just say pull it off till we have the new fire chief and then we can redefine our uh, legislative. But I, I wouldn't be opposed to funding mechanisms, like something to help us like with firehouses or apparatus or something. But that's down. My next thing is um, yes, tax structure. It's, it's part of our problem with our community and rent stability. We're the 50th out of 50 states and regressivity. I, I think we need to start putting this on uh, every single legislative agenda because it's also why we end up with all these tiny little taxes to pay for everything, which are more regressive. Um, obviously the property tax levy lid lift has been like Councilmember Cooper, a favorite of mine since I've been on council. And now that I'm chair of finance, I, and you can see what they're, we're facing with this budget. It's untenable. Um, and then anything climate and housing and homelessness. I, I would really stress um, not only funding for some of the projects we have going on. I'd also stress that we really need to push the state to step up and take leadership in mental illness and substance abuse and help communities because we are by de facto having to deal with it. And so we need to really push accountability there. Um, what would I put on the front page? I'm gonna, I would put property tax right up there. Cause all the things that we are talking about in this legislative agenda here is dependent on that. Climate, housing, homelessness, everything. Um, and then climate, obviously in housing.
Thank you. Next I have Councilmember Cooper, followed by Mayor Potem Gilman.
Thank you, Mayor Selby, and thank you, Susan. This is really reflective of our last conversation. So I appreciate that. Um, a couple of comments. So on the um, levy lid lift, I noticed last week that King County Executive Constantine is using the legislative 1% as the driving force for the legislature to look at the, the, you know, the cuts that Jay or the, you know, the bow wave hole that Jay just showed us is like times a million in King County, right? And, and it's, and he can tie a hundred percent of it to the, the, the inflation over the 1% um, cap. And, and so with that mainstream conversation, I agree a hundred percent needs to be top, front and center. Every egg in that basket if we can, and then just to say, if it were me, I would put. The basic income right behind that because I think that's the thing that floats all of the rest of the items on the agenda. And just as a, as a comment on the way the, this is framed. Susan, the, the basic income one has the bill above the priority. So if you flipped it, it would match the theme of the way you're doing the rest of the document where you have just the general priority. And then the current bill and the current session after that. And to me, that then establishes that we're all about. Uh, it, those kinds of programs for, for working people. Um, fire and EMS. Okay. So. I really appreciate you taking a stab at putting some language on here to, to drive a conversation, which is what you were doing based on what you're. Hearing some of us say in the halls and the community say, I think after a design process that failed at the ballot box. You know, and, and I think we heard it from our commenters tonight, you know, it failed at the ballot box because it was ill fated from the beginning. Like the, the, the RFA. Authority is designed for rural fire districts. Some urban communities have managed to make it work. You know, the, you know, super majority for a, a government funding stream for, for public safety is as bout as bizarre. As I can possibly imagine compared to a state government who sets up separate taxing districts. For parks and recreation and not EMS. And, and so for me, this, the, the, the headline. Needs to remain that local government needs. Uh, um, sorry, I lost my page funding, like, so it, it, it's about the ability to fund. EMS and fire response in community, period. It's not about an RFA. It's about having tools, just like we have, that make our parks department and our park system one of the best in the country. We want that for our fire department and we shouldn't have to go out to a general operating levy lid lift to pit. Uh, the core service of fire and EMS against other things every single day. Uh, that's, that's, that to me is, is, is a really important conversation that. We need to continue to have our legislature understand and, and help us design policy that will work, uh, work for us. We have. Levers we can pull and have pulled around the, the, the police and the, 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 um, the emergent response side of, of community safety. But we really don't have any other levers than the RFA and, and we should.
All right. Thank you so much. Next I have Mayor Potem Gilman, followed by Councilmember Payne.
Thank you, Mayor Selby. Um, first, I just, I want to really appreciate both the, um, the guaranteed basic income pilot and the tax structure reform. But I, I think. Um, at, at this moment in history, um, that it's just super important to be trying to. You know, uh, address economic inequality and, and those both seem like good priorities to me there. And then I, um, I appreciate what Councilmember Cooper just said about. We could have a broader bullet about EMS and fire services. And I, I just want to say I take exception with having heard a couple of times tonight that that bullet point on the EMS one is not about RFA. Because allowing jurisdictions in close proximity to combine, to form a combined public safety department. Is exactly what, what the RFA was. And so I'm, I'm strongly opposed to our advocating for that to be council manic. The legislature thought it was important enough. It was a, a flexible enough source of income that it would require two votes of the community to put it, you know. Permanently in place. So, um, I, I don't want to question that legislative wisdom or intent. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have, uh. Councilmember Payne, followed by Councilmember Quinn.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so just a, a few items, uh, here. Councilmember Cooper, I agree with the, the order that you talked about, uh, on the front of the page. I think we need the, the levy lid lift at the top. Uh, followed by, uh, addressing the, uh, basic income pilot program. Uh, I think that's a, a great flow of the priorities. Um, first, the, uh, under housing, uh, the continued state support for rights away safety initiative. I think we might need some language around supporting Olympia and supporting cities, uh, with their local rights away. I believe they incorporated that, um, just this past time around, but if we could include that language to stress the importance of the fact that. While the program is, is, um, you know. Basically to support, uh, the clearing of states' rights away, we do see an impact to cities as well as they do that. And so, uh, having some language around that I think would be helpful. Um, and then. Under, uh, further support regarding public safety re, uh, reforms, uh, resources for therapeutic courts. Um, so I don't know if we've checked in with ours, but I think it'd be great, um, as a result of the, the Blake fix, um, to. Um, check in with them and see, uh, where are they, um. Constrained, uh, and, and what could they use? Uh, it's support and, and then also, and lastly, uh, funding to respond to the opioid, uh, and fentanyl use epidemic. Um, I think needs to be, uh, a bullet that's here as well.
Thank you. All right. Next we have Councilmember Quinn.
Yeah, I, um. Uh, it's tough, isn't it? Legislators are, um, they're not implementers, are they? Um, and so, um, I, yeah, so. This is a really, uh, interesting time where we get to, uh, to challenge them to, uh, to keep trying to meet our needs best. Um, I, s- some clear ones, I guess I'll just start off with, uh, things that bubble to the top for me. And then, um, and then I want to open it up. I know that we've heard from pretty much every council member at this point, but. Uh, I have a question for my councilmates, um, and I know the, uh, our, our meeting is, is kind of a lengthier one tonight, but I hope that you'll, you'll. Join me in, in sharing, uh, sharing your thoughts about this one. So, um. For me, the money needs to be at the top. So that is, that is in support to, uh, with what my colleagues, some of my colleagues have said. Um, I, I, I think that it's, I mean, it's me. The two things that I had, if I had to really just boil it down, the two things I care most about is equity and money. And money is like just a match on, on equity. I just think it is the fastest way to equity, period. So, um, and that one, as far as the city, uh, this, uh, you know, taxes or, or, uh. Levy lid lift, uh, or, or, or basic income pilot program. I'm not sure which one we should put at the top. Um, uh. The other one, um, but I think that all three of those things should be right up at the top. Um, but I also think of like Maslow's hierarchy of needs, you know? So when I, I approach this, I think about it. Uh, like all the way at the bottom, and I know something had to be at the bottom. So I'm not picking on you, Susan. But further legislative action to reduce gun violence. If there's gun violence, like forget the rest of this. It's over. You know what I'm saying? So that should be also right at the top. Anyway, um, so, so then that leads into, uh, and then, so then after that I think about housing. Um, so you know what, you know what I'm saying? Like thinking about like, what do people need first in our city? Um, and so that really kind of leads into, um. My, uh, question, uh, to councilmates, you know, we, this is my third, third time now of, uh. Or maybe second time of looking at, you know, what should be on this list? Um, and what should be on, or what should be on the front page? And we ask that every year, but. I'm curious what people's thoughts are about, you know, what lands for you on the front page? What does the front page mean? What does a top spot mean? Um, because we have some things on here that, um. That, you know, quite honestly, in a short session, we know probably won't get funded, but we put it on there every year and we hope that it'll get funded. We hope that people. Will realize and the powers that be that, uh, we are in desperate need of a tax reform. And, and I would say for, uh, gotten reducing gun violence, that's another one that always seems so pie in the sky that's glaringly obvious. So is that why we put them towards the bottom? You know, i- is it because we're, you know, yeah, we believe in this, but they're probably not going to do it. Like. How are we, how are we thinking of it? When we know the, uh, from our, uh, from staff, uh, that are following what. Uh, legislators may do in the upcoming year. Um, are we, you know, I'm sure there's a, a, a portion of it where we're factoring in like what bills are probably going to be dropped. What, uh, what bills will probably go through, you know? So then is that, is that also like how we decide where we put it? Um, so I would really, really like to know. Um, yeah.
Uh, Mayor, uh, Mayor, I can't everybody mayor tonight. We're all mayors, honorary.
Manager.
I don't want to be mayor.
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted to highlight that, um, we have had some outreach. Our, our lobbyist Deborah McGee has had some outreach to the 22nd delegation in terms of their priorities. And Susan, I'm wondering if you could share a little bit. I, I do know from, from talking to Beth Doleo. That climate is the top of, on the top of her list. So as you think about the question from Councilmember when. She's going to be working on climate policy in this session to some extent. Um, around affordable housing, I know, uh, Representative Bateman is going to be working on more changes, um, and updates to missing middle. And working on housing affordability, which really works into your housing and affordable housing bullet. Um, the other one, um, that was mentioned that I know from talking to Candace Bockley, AWC, that I know is going to get a lot of attention is the one percent. Uh, cap on property tax. So just those three to, to the question that was asked about where's our 22nd delegation? I think those are three items they're really paying attention to. It's not that the other items aren't there, but specifically I know those are on their list and other items might be, Susan, you want to add anything there?
Uh, you kind of stole my thunder there, but yeah, um, those are, those are the real top ones. Um, and Deborah is also in the process of, uh, setting up, uh, meetings with the delegation, um, individually to talk to them about what they're looking forward. Towards this next session. They're just been a little hard to pin down, but we're working on that.
Okay. So back to Councilmember when, what would you like from us? I mean, I, I'm not quite sure.
That's fair. Um, uh, well, because I, I, I always have comments and then I have questions that I'm hoping a lot of people will answer and then, and then I kind of like lose the rest of my time. So. A couple more things, uh, for I sort of asked the question again is for under reduced gun violence, can we get a little bit more specific? Um, there is, uh, some of these, I, I think, I think it's, we're leaving it broad sort of on purpose. Uh, and, and some of these bullet points under it, but I think we could get more specific and I wonder if, uh. I wonder about our partners at the, specifically the Olympia school district. Like, is there something that we can put under that? That could give it extra, you know, support for them. Um, we're not the school district ourselves, but certainly, you know, we, our police department answers those calls. So, um, there's that. Um, I guess probably a squeaky wheel at this point, but, uh. I agree with my councilmates on the EMS and fire services. I also know that this is one of those times where, you know, we're, we're just trying to take all the input and, and put it in a way that, that we, that we think we're hearing it. Um, and the direction we're receiving, and then it's like one thing turns into a big deal tonight, right? So, um, but I think that, uh, part of what that's getting, getting at is that. Hey, we're running out of money, right? The whole reason we did the RFA in the first place is hey, we're running out of money. So, um, and that goes into tax structure reform and then the, uh, tax levy lid lift. So if there is something more that we can add to both of those categories. That sort of get at what we're trying to get at with EMS and fire services, I think that would be an apt place to put it.
Okay, I've got, next I have. Sorry. There we are. Uh, next I have Councilmember Partially, followed by Councilmember Cooper.
Um.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was still talking.
Oh, oh, people raising their hands. So.
Oh, yes, yes. Um, and, uh, with that, I will ask, uh, so in a more precise way. My question is, what's the methodology about what lands on the front page? Because we talk about this and, and, uh. I think it would help us whittle down like what's actually going to be on the front page.
Okay. Susan, do you want to take that? I mean, I can, I can wing it, but I have an idea.
You know, traditionally it's been the things that are most important to council and, and, um, you know, also, uh, a, a lot of these things are, you know. Priorities for stuff, we're working on climate, working on housing and all of those things tied together, but ultimately it's, you know, councils wish for what they want us to really, um, highlight.
Sure. And it, those of you that have gone into those 15 minute meetings with our legislators, you hand them a one cheater. And they're going to maybe spend a little bit more time on the front than the back. And so it is really kind of our priorities.
Yeah.
Does that help? Councilmember when?
I, it sort of, I mean, I get it. I get memos from people, you know, it's like, yes, of course you, you want it to like, this is, uh, this is our, our moment to, to make the impact, but. Um, I am, yeah, I'm, I'm just curious, what, what? Is a priority to, to people here? Like what is it? Like, how do you think about it? So I'm thinking like deeper into like how? What is our philosophy of the one page? Like, do we just put things that we think are going to pass? Do we put our biggest pie in the sky priorities? Like. Yeah, I'm just asking for your, your deeper thoughts until like what bubbles to the top for priorities.
Sure. So when I think about this and the, the mayor's completely right. You've got 15 minutes, they're probably going to turn it over, maybe their staff. So what's on the front is what we, I look at it as, do we have a state of emergency? We've declared homelessness and housing. Climate. Um, we have, uh, things our community is really pushing us to do, you know, what's the best for our community as well as our region. Um, and then honestly, what can we get done? Is, is there something looming that we can really put our weight behind? That will help the legislature do the right thing and they've got, they're probably going to have a bill in front of them. That's how I try to figure out what the front page is, is, you know, because of declared emergencies, what our community is really pushing. And, um, what the legislature is actually going to. Put on their own tables and lending our weight if it falls into our priorities. It's subjective. I wish we could have a nice little mathematical equation for this, but it's, I don't know that we can.
Yeah, I appreciate it and we, we can move on. It's just, we talk about the different topics, but we don't, you know, spending the time. To talk about like how you got there, I think is more helpful in all of us coming together and, and certainly. Uh, really insightful for me about, you know, how my colleagues think beyond just what are the topics? So thanks.
Okay. My, my quick comment is I just want to support the, um, evergreen basic income too, because it kind of goes with the one percent. And then what Councilmember Cooper said is, I don't know if further, uh, s- support for funding mechanisms is. You should maybe add in other governance structures, you know, guidance on that, because there, he's right, there's got to be other ways than RFAs. And, you know, our community came up with a lot of them, um, and then post RFA. So there's, there's options out there and we just, we need more than the RFA.
All right. I. Councilmember Cooper, did you have your hand up again?
Yeah, I have two comments, but I know you haven't gone mayor and I know there's a lot swirling around, so I can, I can certainly wait a minute.
What everyone's saying, I'm still kind of, you know, chewing on what Councilmember when was saying and. Trying to figure out how to get you, what, help us help ourselves in how we're doing this. And I think that's what you were trying to help us do. Cause you can see this is a very difficult conversation because we all have our. Things that are really, you know, passionate about or things that have hit our families like mental health or, you know, or gun violence and all these things are just, they're all. Really powerful topics. So, uh, go ahead.
Uh, to, to me, that question would be good to start with when we're in the first conversation. So when we need, when we don't have all the things, right? Like then. What would be your, you know, with a, with a blank agenda, what would be our criteria for, for? How to set the top tier versus the second tier priority? Which I think is what we generally mean by page one, page two, but there is, there's also not a lot of. Direct competition between the kinds of things we have because there's such specifically different buckets of government, different commit committees, different functions. So I, I, I appreciate the question. For me, it would be easier to wrestle with it when I don't have all of the things in front of me. Um, so, so, and then I also wanted to just jump in, I, because I think, I appreciate the request for more specifics on gun violence. And I think that the, the specific that's here around expanding the prohibition. Of open carry to all publicly owned facilities is, is the thing we want, whether the state expands the prohibition or. Reduce, removes the preemption, right? Like, cause that was really what we were originally asking for was to take the preemption away and let us govern. Gun safety in our buildings. And just like someone else can do in their home or the state can do in all of its own buildings. So I, I, to me, that's, that's just some. So I, I, to me, that's, that's just some, some response to, to the council member who wins question there. And then I will, I'll like make what might be in addition and, and I'll just, um, maybe respect council member Madrone and, uh, Darian in whether this needs to end up in the final agenda, but in my, um, housing authority work in the last month, I have realized that the, there's been a significant expense of our public affordable and permanent supportive housing money on methamphetamine abatement in our units. And I've been talking to Trudy Sukup at Homes First about it and realizing that it's all of our providers. Just about every, um, lower cost property comes with some implications around methamphetamine in the units. The only ones we know about are the ones that end up getting public investment in them. You know, someone else can flip a unit and put some paint on the wall and no one ever even knows if it's contaminated. But we're, we're building this picture and, and what we, what we've found, what I believe that we, we've known now is this is a statewide problem and there is no direct funding source for it. So every time we fund a, you know, certain number of units statewide, money's coming off the top to do the, the hazardous materials cleanup abatement from, uh, from contamination from the prior tenants. And so I, I have talked to count, um, council member, Representative Bateman about this. And she's tracking the conversation and bringing it into legislative housing, housing conversations. Generally, I think our housing page probably gets at it between the lines, but it felt emergent enough when I talked to Darian about it. And when I talked to Rep Bateman about it, that we should at least consider whether it's something we want to add into our agenda.
Thank you. I was just looking at the, at the bullet under, uh, can we say bullets anymore? Uh, state's leadership and support for renter tenant protections, including rent stabilization, tenant screening and, you know, environmental, um, remediation could just be added. All right. Councilmember Madrone.
Uh, yeah, I'm glad that you're talking to Representative Bateman about that. Um, and, uh, I'm not sure environmental remediation gets, that might be too broad of a term. Um, I mean, hazardous material abatement, uh, or, or, you know, work with the language there, maybe check in with Darian and, um, Rep Bateman. Um, but, but I mean, you're right. A significant amount of the funding that we don't expect to go towards rehabilitating, uh, living units. Uh, ends up going towards that. And then there's delays in the project and that's expensive. Um, I wanted to, um, add on a bit to what, um, uh, council member Payne said around the, uh, rights away initiative and making sure that local rights away are included in that. Um, and, um, I, and I think one thing that's not explicitly stated here, but it's, it's, it's baked in, but it's not explicitly stated is that, that means like ongoing support for emergency shelter, you know, tiny homes or, uh, congregate shelter, all of that. Um, cause that's what we've gotten from the rights away, uh, initiative, uh, has been, um, tiny homes and, uh, all these facilities that, you know, we have to cross our fingers that there's going to be state funding for to continue to operate them. So it's, uh, it's in there, but it's not explicitly stated. Uh, but including language around local, um, stuff and something for us to just monitor. Not something that needs to be written in here is the geographic distribution of these funds. Um, a lot of them end up going to King County. Sometimes Thurston County is kind of wedged out a little bit with how, um, how they set up their calculators for where, where funding goes. Um, but just something for us to monitor, especially when it comes to tweaking bill language to make sure that Thurston, it doesn't get left behind. Um, and I, I have, I have another thing to maybe not add to our agenda unless it comes around in December and something pops up, but abortion access is, has been a priority of this council. Um, I don't know if there are any active bills that didn't quite make it across the finish line. I don't know if anything's going to pop up. Um, but I, I, I think it's something that we should at least be monitoring. Um, so maybe when this comes around again in December. Uh, if you have a sense of, uh, what we might see in that realm.
Could you run that out to be reproductive and abortion? Just so the access to both of them?
Yes, 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 yes. Rep, reproductive health, abortion access. Yep. All of that. Yeah. So, um, like I said, not to add more to our already, uh, lengthy list. Um, it's never great to go in with a lengthy list because people's eyes just start to glaze over. But again, something to monitor and make sure that we're upholding our commitments, um, around that. I, I just, I'm wondering, Susan, are you getting what you need from us for prioritization?
Yes, I think so. I, I think I have, I have a list of, in general order of what it needs to be. So I think.
Okay. I, I, I just, I just feel concerned for you because we've all said different things, but they're somewhat aligned. So.
They're pretty aligned. Um, I think.
I just want to make sure you get what you need.
I could always roll back the tape and, and make sure, you know?
That's right. That's right. Or, or, you know, um, uh, check in with us, uh, via Jay, uh, or, or whatever, but, um, it's, it's, it, it feels unwieldy just from where I sit. So from where you stand, I just want to make sure you got what you need.
I appreciate that very much.
Next I have council member Payne followed by Mayor Sylvie.
Just really quickly, I, I, I just wanted to state that clearly, um, there's a few times a year where we all are together and, and I think it's pretty obvious that, that we're, we're having some trouble. Um, answering council member one's question as to how we, how do we think and prioritize, uh, the issues? And so I'm not saying that we add another agenda item to the retreat. But it has me thinking about our P1, P2, P3 exercise and, and how we go through that. And so perhaps, uh, and I know we have some questions about even how we do that. And so, uh, maybe during the retreat, there's time where we, we talk that through, uh, and maybe that sort of, uh, sets the foundation for the legislative priorities, uh, after.
Agreed. I, I put a note here already need to work on process. So.
And so what I was going to add is under the mental health and behavioral health resources, uh, some of these bullets look like there's been legislation and funding already for some of them. So what I would, what, what I think help everybody is for us to get a recap of what's already happened. So we can really dial in on the gaps. And the one that, you know, I, I've been speaking to our, uh, L, our LD22 reps is about, um, more tools for families to get, uh, family members who are not minors into psychiatric care. And that's a big gap right now.
Yeah.
And, you know, I know that, I understand why it's gone so far in one direction because there was a lot of, um, involuntary commitment action. It happened, you know, decades ago that took away people's rights. And so we want to respect that. But I, I, I think in what I'm hearing in the community of, I mean, mental health has touched every family that I know. Um, you know, either it's friends or, or, or relatives and you, you know, that is something that people really struggle with because there's no tools right now. And I've heard it also from our, our care providers, uh, in the, in the shelters that there's, there's people that are in their shelters that should not be, you know, they can't care for them. And then they end up, you know, in our, in our streets and in our public health and our criminal system and all that. So anyhow, it, but it would be good for us to know what resources are already out there. Cause I know the state funded a bunch of new beds across the state and, and I thought they weren't making it, uh, expanding training and making it some incentives for people to go into mental health. Uh, anyhow, so that would, I think would help. Yes. Um, I'd be okay with it being, um, number one, but number two is fine. I'm just kidding. Just kidding.
We're going to have to have 11 by 17, like what just a big one first page.
A little banner we run in there.
Mayor, mayor.
No.
Mayor.
Two different cards. You can flip it.
How many meetings will you take next year?
How many meetings?
With legislators, like, cause we'd love to use you on this agenda.
I'm happy to lobby for free for the city. There he is. It's very easy for me to do that. Anyhow, uh, that's all I had. Oh, yes. Sorry. You've had your hand up for a while. City manager, Bruni.
Well, I just, just add to the conversation. I know the hour's late and I think Suz is got a lot here, but, um, using your community survey as a guide. Right? Your community survey, the top priorities, housing homelessness, um, climate, um, economic development, specifically um, issues of affordability for living in our community, which the, the pilot program income chroma does that. Um, and then, you know, as we've been talking tonight, just about resources, the lack of resource, which helps us do all those things, which is the property tax issue. I also think there might be an opportunity and, and we'll, I'll talk to Suz. We'll look at this a little bit to, um, combine some of the, another top priority in your survey was public safety. And it's a big bucket. And I don't think when people said public safety, they're just thinking about work that the, that the cops have to do. I think they're talking about mental health resources. I think they're talking about other things and maybe we could create a category around public health and safety reform that has several of these items in it rather than spread out over multiple items. So maybe something we could like, and then that helps you then get to a front page that's a little, um, more condensed.
Fair enough. Uh, councilor Madrone.
I just want to note, like, there's a vote expected from us on this and we've had such a conversation around it that I just don't feel like it's something I can vote on at this point. Um, and so I know it's coming back to us in December. Could we just like, you take our feedback, digest it, turn it into something that we are like, yes, you got it. Can, can we do that instead of voting tonight? Okay. Thank you.
You have what you need, Susan.
I do have what I need. Um, and then I will be back on December 5th with a beautiful, shiny legislative agenda. And then also on that night, we're going to have our federal lobbyists come and meet you guys, um, and talk a little bit about the federal agenda. So, um, lots of movement, um, lots of, lots of stuff in the future. So.
Wonderful. Well, thank you so, so much, Susan. This is, this process over the years has gotten so much, um, more refined. And you've done a great job fine tuning it, listening to us. So thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Uh, so we will not be taking action on item six A this evening, which takes us to council member reports. I'll start with the mayor's report. I have nothing to report. I'm going to go to my right, councilor Madrone.
I just want to share really quickly that I had the opportunity to go to the American Planning Association, Washington chapter conference in Spokane last week. Um, had the opportunity to learn about some things that happened in the legislature that our city staff are going to be working on in the comp plan update process. Um, went to a lot of sessions about, uh, the intersections of transportation and housing. Um, and also I got to see, um, Rich Hoy, uh, Darian Lightfoot and Pamela Baraf, uh, present around, uh, affordable housing and climate change and the ways that our staff collaborates to meet both of these really important goals. And I'm just so proud of them. That's all.
Can I just remark on that? That is exactly why we need to have a travel and training budget for people to go to conferences. Uh, because we learn not only from other communities, but we also learn what a great job we're doing as a, you know, with our staff and, and a council. So. Councilor, uh, Payne.
Nothing to report.
Right. Councilor Partially.
Guess what? Lot. So I'm going to go into lot a little bit. Uh, yeah, why not? It's nine o'clock. So we started our strategic planning process and it's a big deal because like I said before, federal and state permitting is through the project. It's a 30 year strategic plan they're putting together that they have to update early and amend. But they're even looking, going back and we started looking at our mission, vision and values. And we're going to keep the values because that was a public run process that has been, was phenomenal. And we are going to really dig into the mission and vision in the next meeting. In our, uh, conversations, we, um, did give permission to have the executive director sign the petition for the downtown improvement district. Um, it's not very much. It's quite a bit less than the city, but it's still, they voted to bring it in. And, uh, we talked about PFOS and what we're going to be doing for the future to keep track of it, not only keep track of what's coming into the plant, but trying to track sources. Because Michigan state's law, which we could very well see requires the water treatment plants to actually figure out where the source of the PFOS is coming from. Um, and then we, um, had a little update on our uh, biennium budget and we're not going to do any amendments. We're right on. And pretty much that is it, except for a report on some of our properties and contaminations that we are already working on.
Is that it?
I could go more.
No.
There's a lot more, but.
A lot. Uh, so I just know that you had anything else to report on besides a lot.
That's it.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for council member? Council member when?
I heard you taught us, council member partially quit freaking us out. Um, yeah, I just had a quick one. Um, just really, uh, wanted to lift up some work of staff. Um, uh, on Saturday and, and last night, um, I had an opportunity to, uh, come and speak with uh, community members that, um, are beginning to engage in, uh, community, uh, what community involvement in law enforcement can look like. Um, what an impressive group of people. We did a round of introductions beforehand. I hope that, I know that we'll, we'll hear from them, uh, in future and, um, and if not directly, uh, soon here, we'll, we'll have some information on who they are, but I just, yeah, I, I wish you all are in the room with me. Um, but it's, you know, it, it was clearly very, very well thought out. Um, uh, the, I'm not sure what the recruitment process was top of mind right now, but it's just, it was absolutely not random. Um, I, I'm really excited about embarking on this work, uh, with, uh, with this group of people. Um, and then, uh, also, uh, ju- just last night, uh, was a subcommittee. I mean, it might as well have been the entire social justice and equity committee, but it's pretty large subcommittee, um, but also, uh, uh, a great group of people, um, about to embark on this, the same work here, uh, again with community involvement in law enforcement. And we're saying that very specifically, uh, it's typically, we call it a community oversight board. But just trying to, just trying to not lock people into like what specific boards and, and different cities that are already established to look like. But thinking about overall the goal of community involvement, I think that really is, is the goal coming out from reimagining public safety. Um, but, uh, yeah, so anyways, I just wanted to, uh, lift up, uh, uh, Stacy Ray and, um, and then Stacy is working with, uh, William. I forget his last name. Sorry, William. Um, but he is just lovely. He started about a month ago. I'm sure you have an email, um, for, for his welcome. Um, and then, uh, Sam Costello was there as well from the Olympia Police Department. And, uh, we're just, I just feel really heartened that we're off to a really good start with something that's really tough and complex. And I think these are, these are people that are going to keep coming back to the table when, um, when things get really tough, like, right? What was we saw with the, uh, reimagining, uh, public safety work group? So really excited. I know we'll get updates, um, weekly. Uh, and looking forward to how they're, like what their involvement looks like. Uh, yeah, but I'm feeling really confident. And, uh, thank you to, uh, uh, assistant city manager Debbie Sullivan, Stacy Ray. And all her brilliance, um, is a direct report to you and, um, just a reflection, uh, of your team and, uh, and it shines. So, thank you.
All right. Councilmember Cooper.
Thank you, Mary Selby. Just a couple of quick things. So the Clean Air Agency, um, board meeting last week, we had an update on uh, our notice of construction. Uh, applications have gone up. So we're seeing more people who, um, pay to pollute and get permitted around pollution. Uh, putting in permits to add more lines and more work within current facilities or even new facilities. Which also includes three significant major federal sources in Gray's Harbor County. Um, which looks and feels like a Gray's Harbor, port of Gray's Harbor boom to me when I just see the Clean Air Agency. Uh, body of work from there, including a, a, a new, um, uh, pellet plant that they're going to put in out, out there or that they're, they're attempting to put in out there, which will be a, a major EPA source, which the Clean Air Agency manages for the Department of Ecology in our region. Um, so that, I think that's interesting. Uh, it's just something to, to pay attention to as we typically, the, the permitting at ORCA can be really leading or lagging around the, the, the economy as a whole. Um, we also had a cool, um, recruitment come across our table from the EPA uh, for, uh, members of a local government advisory committee. And so, um, working with the, um, staff at ORCA, uh, the staff at the city and the staff at the county solid waste division. Uh, we put in a nomination for me to be on the EPA's local government advisory committee. So, um, thinking that Olympia has a place to lead in that conversation nationally and, um, hopefully by the end of November, we'll hear a positive outcome from that, from that nomination. So, um, and then fun fact, next week I get to spend the day at the Economic Development Council annual retreat. So that will be a day filled with all kinds of fun. Thank you.
Really great. Can't wait to hear. A real quick question. A real quick question, the wood, the pellets you're talking about, the pellet plant, that's wood pellets for heating?
That's how I understand it, yeah, like heat at home heating pellets.
And, and so they're.
And, and then like, they, they will burn, this, this is sort of wild and I'll, I'll learn more as the permit becomes, but there, they will burn the excess slash and wood waste from the Olympic Peninsula to create the energy to then create the condensed pellets that go in people's fireplace.
So it's supposed to be a closed loop?
Except for the fact that it's still combustion.
Well, yeah, thank you. And then when you burn those pellets, they, there's.
Yeah, don't get me started, but.
I just remember wood, wood pellet stoves in the eighties and like.
A- and they, they have new standards and they're more efficient. Still, still, anytime we're doing open combustion, we're not in the electric.
Right, right. Uh, all right, Mayor Protem Gilman.
First, thank you for accommodating my remote attendance tonight, I appreciate that. I attended several pretty exciting meetings and I look forward to telling you highlights at our next meeting.
All right, thank you, you just muted, so I figured you're done. All right, have a great evening, thank you for joining us. Hope your back feels better. Uh, now we're gonna go to our city manager, Jay Burney.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, I have two quick items. One is um, it's an exciting week because um, we've got a new fire chief. So I made a, an offer to Matt Morris to be our new fire chief, he has accepted. Matt um, comes to us from Puget Sound Regional Fire Authority, or he was the chief. Uh, he did an amazing job in the interview process um, all along the way. Uh, he will start November 6th and so shortly thereafter, I will bring him here to council so you can meet him and I can introduce him. Um, but I also want to just um, express my appreciation to all the interview panels and um, and just a great partnership with the union on this and the union executive board, the union president. Um, just a lot of communication along the way. Uh, we were pretty much in lockstep to get to this recommendation. And I appreciate the support of the union, the union president and the E-Board on this hire. So we're in a really good spot, he's a really dynamic leader, I cannot wait to get him here. Uh, he's gonna do great things um, for Olympia. And then secondly uh, is tomorrow, just a reminder for all of you, is our annual staff recognition event at the Armory at eleven, starting at eleven thirty and you are all welcome to attend. Um, we're gonna have some lunch and give out some awards um, to recognize some really outstanding accomplishments by city employees. So I hope that all of you can clear some time in your schedule. Um, just in terms of the day, um, I'll probably get to the awards portion of it around the noon timeframe. So if, as you plan your day, if you can't get there by eleven thirty, you've got some time. So hopefully y'all can make it.
Thank you for that and I just want to add, I know you're, we've talked about this. Um, the amount of gratitude we have for Todd Carson as our interim fire chief for the service that he, you know, he led us through a pretty tumultuous time. And so he just deserves a, a big tip of the hat.
Yeah, absolutely. I can't say enough about Todd's dedication um, in serving the interim role for the last fifteen months. Um, um, I have a tremendous amount of respect for Todd um, a- as a city employee, um, as someone that I care deeply about as a person. And um, I just really appreciate him and his service, so thanks for that, Mayor.
Absolutely. So with no further business before the Olympia City Council, we're adjourned.